And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, before we get started, I wanted, I wanted to wish, even though she is not present in this room, Ms. Solano, a very happy birthday. So happy birthday to Ms. Solano. We would sing, but I don't think that you would want that. Um, okay, so our first presentation is from Health Solutions. So do we have Mr. Chapeau to the podium?
First technology about as much as I can understand it. So we got some presentations.
Thank you.
Right. Are we going to have the presentation on the screen or? Yeah, please. Uh, thank you, councilors for having Health Solutions here. You may know that I just started this position in June, so I am the new chief executive officer for Health Solutions. And I wanted to take the opportunity and appreciate the opportunity that you're giving me here tonight to just kind of orient you to our community mental health center. It is important to us that you understand our role in the community, the services that we offer. And it's important that we make ourselves available to you as the leadership of the city so that we are aligned in meeting just the infinite amount of behavioral health needs that our community faces. You'll see the agenda there on the first slide. We'll pass the agenda. I'm assuming those four bullet points were self-evident. If you have questions about the agenda, happy to take them. But I did promise Sandy, she let me know that you were really specific about time, so I have 90 minutes. So I will work through that within the 90-minute threshold. Um, I wanted to give you a little bit about our timeline. Health Solutions is, has been in the community as a community mental health center for 60 years this year. You may find that surprising. We have rebranded a few different times over the course of those 60 years, which I'll point out here on this milestone timeline for you. But we have not been acquired or taken over or reorganized or merged in any significant way. And there's been some confusion about that just by nature of the differences in our name change. We were founded as a community mental health center in 1962. Our name at that time was Spanish Peaks Mental Health Center. From 1962 to 2011, our primary service delivery was around the community mental health component with a heavy emphasis, almost exclusive emphasis, on what was then called mental health services. That typically included case management, counseling-type services, group therapy-type services, and medication management. And we did that for a long time, got really good at it, and have a long history in the community in doing that. You'll see that as we moved into the early part of the 2000s, we began to add different components to our service continuum. And there's a few that I want to point out because you may or may not be aware of the exact breadth of the service delivery system that we have. So in 2012 was our first entry point into the substance use disorder space. Up until that point, we had been primarily focused on mental health services. At that time, we worked with the court system to stand up a specialty court for targeting specifically substance use disorder clients that might be better served in an, in a kind of an alternative and unique way through the criminal justice system with a heavy emphasis on treatment and community engagement. At that time, we also started a very important service that on this slide is called Care Coordination. Care Coordination in 2012, and here in our region, it actually covered 19 counties, was one of the first pilots for what would later become the current Medicaid benefit delivery system that we're operating under now. You may have heard the different regional entities referred to as RAEs. There are seven of them in the state of Colorado, and they adjudicate the Medicaid benefit across the state of Colorado for both medical and behavioral health services. In 2012, Health Solutions was one of four that began operating in an integrated philosophical framework in working with complex care clients. Meaning clients that have co-occurring medical, behavioral health, and substance use disorders. That's really important because most of that work is what was carried forward into the current system. We continue that current work today, and I'll talk about that as we look towards what our future holds. You'll see in 2014, this was a very busy year for Health Solutions in terms of service expansion. This was the year when really we went from a small to medium-sized organization to being one of the larger organizations in the state of Colorado, certainly the largest organization in this region. Medicaid expansion happened that year. That brought in the substance use benefit being covered by the Medicaid health plan. That was very different. Up until that point, the, most of the substance use benefit was covered by the general fund from the state. So our population grew significantly. We also had the crisis service system that happened under Governor Hickenlooper and the funding for a statewide crisis system. And so we deployed mobile crisis units. We stood up our living room and Walk-In Center, which is currently in operation today, and were able to do a variety of other things. Then you fast forward to 2016, and this was another pivotal milestone in our continuum. That is when we opened our medical practice. And we opened our medical practice not because primary care medicine is super profitable. In fact, the margins are almost zero. But what we were finding in the research, what the nation was aware of in our industry, and what we were experiencing on a daily basis at Health Solutions was that if you have a severe and persistent mental illness, you die 25 years earlier than your counterpart in the general population. We found that statistic unacceptable. You, and they, and the folks in that category were not dying from an illness like schizophrenia. Schizophrenia in and of itself is not a fatal illness. They were dying for physical health concerns that either weren't being addressed or were being magnified because of the medication and the nature of the illness that they were experiencing with something like schizophrenia, bipolar, treatment-resistant depression. So we opened our medical practice in 2016. That practice still occurs. It's unique. When you come to a service at our medical center, you see a doctor and you see a mental health practitioner. And that's a screening-integrated environment where we're trying to provide holistic care to the whole family in that campus. So pretty big deal for us. We're proud of that rollout. It's unique in the state of Colorado for a community mental health center to be in the primary care space. There's only two or three others of those across the state, really unique to Pueblo. And you'll see as I go through this presentation over the next 95 minutes, did we say cancel? Yeah, no, I'm, I'm joking. As we go through the presentation, Pueblo has done some really unique things in terms of being on the front end of the treatment service delivery system. So there's some other things that we've done there. You'll see in 2019, the Family Center. That was the year that we acquired what used to be referred to as the El Pueblo Boys Ranch out in the county. And I'll talk a little bit here in a second about what we're doing out there. But again, a huge expansion for us. That's over 52 acres out there and an opportunity to bring a lot of unique and creative services. And then you'll see 2022, we're 60 years old and are looking forward to the next 60 years in the communities that we serve. So any questions about the timeline really quickly before I go into some data and what we're looking at over the next 12 to 18 months?
Counselor Winner. Thank you. So, um, do you provide detox or rehab or both?
We do not provide, kind of the modern term for detox is withdrawal management. So we do not provide that in a residential way. We do do that on an outpatient basis, and then we provide medication-assisted treatment to assist with withdrawal management. Nothing is inpatient at this point for us in the substance use disorder space.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. This just gives you a little bit of visibility to what last year looked like, just in terms of scope and size. I do want to point out to you, notice that first upper left-hand bar graph there, the average income for a average client at Health Solutions. That's a significant statistic, and I want to keep that in front of you. You'll notice that we provide over 180,000 services across our adult service continuum. 37,000, almost 38,000 in our youth space. Our staff percentages, we are very proud of this statistic. Most of our staff, 85% of our staff come from Pueblo. That's hard to do in healthcare in Pueblo right now. There's a lot of transient staff, contract staff, staff coming out of northern counties. And so what we like about this are a couple of things. One, the buy-in into our organization is significantly different when it's your community that you're serving. When it's your kid's teacher, you know, tutor, friend that might be coming to get services, your buy-in is at a higher level. It also is raising the floor in terms of jobs that are available in the city and in the county of Pueblo. We offer a lot of professional opportunities within our organization. We often take potentially a high school or first-year college student into our system as an employee at one level and watch them walk through their educational cycle into the medical field. Where now they're prescribing medications and are overseeing programs and developing things for the community at scale. So that's a really neat statistic. We like to point that out. We have 14 service locations, and you may or may not be aware that our service area actually does also include Werfino, Los Animas, in addition to Pueblo County. Our continuum is broad and wide. I'm not going to read probably much to your relief, every bullet point that is on our continuum slide. I presented this to you just so that you can have an idea of the depth and the width of some of the services that we provide there. The medical space might be one that you might not have known, that we have a primary care clinic. We are in the process of scoping out the feasibility for opening a pediatric practice and the care coordination services that we deliver across a 19-county region area. One of the programs that I'd like to remind you and thank you for your support of the ARPA funding for is the Co-Responder Program that we operate with Pueblo Police Department. Chief Knoller's here and is aware and supportive of that program. We are one of the few communities in which we actually not just place therapists in the vehicles with the law enforcement officer, but we send the therapist through the academy with the law enforcement officers. And what that does is it creates a shared language. It creates some visibility to the cultural differences in those two systems. And there's a street credibility that comes with having operationalized that kind of model. That's unique to Pueblo. And folks are looking at Pueblo and the success that we've had in that model and are saying, hey, how can we do something like that? Now, our therapists don't go out and get post-certified and shoot the guns and all of that, but they do a large component of the academy training, including oftentimes the physical components of the academy training. So thank you for that value, and we look forward to continue to report on that specific program as we get more and more data from, from the funding that you provided us in that space. The last slide, very briefly, is what we're looking at in terms of the future at Health Solutions. The El Pueblo Campus is something that we get a lot of questions about. It was a large property, and often folks are wondering, hey, what are you doing out there in that space? That's what we're calling our Youth and Family Center of Excellence. We are building out, we're in the final stages in the last few buildings of deploying a full child development and youth and family service center on the north side. If you know the campus, it's two sides. There's a north side and there's a south side, split by a little bit of a road or a canal there, an irrigation ditch, whatever that is right there. And on the north side, it's primarily a youth and family space, all outpatient work. But we are offering things like educational programming for youth that have challenges in a full-day academic setting. It's an experiential-based program. We put in a rock wall in one of the gymnasiums, hired a therapist who's a certified mountain guide to work with kids in a kinetic way to begin to get them some skills that are portable back into the public school environment. We are currently scoping out a pediatric clinic there. We have a full-service outpatient clinic for both adults and kiddos on that site. And we operate a daycare. That was one of the silver linings, if any, that have come out of the pandemic. We are a, you know, we have 430 staff members. Many of those have kids. Many of them depend upon the school day for childcare while they're at work. They count on their kids being at school. And when the pandemic hit, that threw many for a loop. So we opened a daycare first with our staff members, and now we see the need for the community. So we're excited to, we're final up, finalizing the licensing to open that up to the community out there, and we'll be able to add a therapeutic component as well as things like occupational therapy and speech therapy. So the whole child development experience there. I like that because it, it evolves and kind of carries forward the legacy of some of the work that happened on that campus. It was primarily focused around kids and, and creating and helping kids who have helped, ran into a rough spot. And so there's a real congruence from a mission standpoint, even though it's taken a different form and shape out there. Complex care management has to do with the, the medical practice serving clients that have complicated diagnostic presentations. If you have ever had to navigate the healthcare system from a primary environment into a specialty environment, independent of a behavioral health issue, it's quite complex. I'm doing that right now. You can see I have all this jewelry on my teeth. I'm trying to navigate just from primary dental into specialty care dental. I have two degrees, and it's complicated. It's complicated to figure out the appointment. It's complicated to figure out who's paying what. It's complicated to get two practitioners to speak to each other. And the more services that you add into that mix, the more challenging it is. And you can imagine if your illness was one that slowed down your thought process or made it hard to concentrate, or it was just noisy, or took away your volition to act and to push through the very real challenges that the healthcare system presents. That's some of why that statistic that I presented earlier is true. They just quit. They quit trying. It's like trying to play hopscotch on a conveyor belt. It just gets old and dangerous, and you get tired of losing. So that's what our complex care management program's about. Training to help folks who fall on that kind of end of the continuum, navigate the system a little bit better. And then the other two are, we're going to deepen and broaden our main and plane. That's the Behavioral Health and SUD. And then it's obvious to us all now, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, but technology moved to the front seat of the service delivery system. It's always been a back office function. It's always been important, but it moved to the front seat for us. So that's kind of what we're looking at. I am happy to take any questions, or I am happy to let you proceed with your meeting. It's the will of council.
Thank you, Mr. Chapeau, for that presentation. What questions or comments are there, Counselor Flores?
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Chapeau. That was, you guys are involved in a lot of, lot of things. Here's my question. It has to do with the identification of mental health issues that our children have suffered in during this last two years and what things you've identified at your organization. And I, what caught my interest was the ad that you have in our local newspaper regarding a special program for kids up until the age of 18. And I'm wondering if you could expand on what you've identified as some of the issues that have occurred as a result of COVID and what your program hopes to to, to, to help, I guess, in getting these children back on track. And I've got another question, but I'm going to stop there with those, those two.
Yeah, with kiddos, it's, it's quite complex. And I would say, A, a lot of what was already there. And so what COVID did, and well, I guess we could have a whole conversation over cocktails about chicken and the egg. But there was a lot of, of challenges that kids were facing prior to COVID. And because of the school system, because of some of the social supports in the way that just the society was structuring, some of those needs were being met, some of those were being identified, and some of them were just being hidden because of the pace of life. COVID kind of pulled the curtain back and exposed a few things in the system that got our attention. One was how critical public education is to the mental health of the kiddos in, in most categories in society. A lot of the service delivery, even for our center for kids, happens in schools. We have teams that go out and meet with kids in schools during the school day. Speech therapists, occupational therapists, special education services. All of those occurred in a large part during the school day. And so when you don't have that context available in the familiar, the, the familiar nature of that context, it kind of throws everything into a weird space from a kid's standpoint. The other thing is, is in a normal environment, the issues that kids face are there. And so we could list them, you know, suicide rates are alarmingly high. I can't remember the exact statistic, but the majority last year of the mental health ED visits in the state of Colorado were for kids under the age of 15. So the majority of people that are showing up to the ED for a behavioral health issue is a kid. That was, those things were there, depression, anxiety. Now, when the environment itself that you're operating in is in a hyper vigilant state, and now the adults that maybe used to be supportive are experiencing their own issues reactive to that environment, the dominoes just start to fall pretty quickly, and you can end up with a unraveling that happens surprisingly fast. And so scale, portability, access, all of those things I think are really important as we think through this next era.
I wanted to follow up too with what you're saying with, you use the term homeless youth, and you know, we have a homeless problem in Pueblo, and we're not alone. I mean, it's everywhere. But tell me what you're doing in that area. And then because you are in the old location of the El Pueblo Boys and Girls Ranch, what, what, are there any services now that you don't provide them in a residential setting for, for children under the age of 18 that, that are wards of the state? Where do they go for assistance if they need a residential space?
Yeah, that's, oh wow, that's a packed question. Let me start with the first one. You know, the homeless youth phenomenon is, is variable. A lot of what we tend to see are what you kind of refer to as couch surfing. And so it's not so much that they're on the street, and I, and I'm not saying there aren't youth on the street. There certainly are. But a lot of it is they're bouncing from friend to friend, neighbor to neighbor, relative to relative. And so creating points that intersect with that movement is often a challenge, and then creating consistency over time with any given provider based on where they may be staying. Because it may be in town, it may be out of town. And so we are doing a lot of work with outreach with youth. We are doing a lot of work with the homeless shelters. We do an enormous amount of work with the school districts to try to identify these kiddos even a little further upstream than maybe this kind of acute phase of homelessness, and really make sure that the support system is there to the degree that we can prior to the event. There's always coming in after and trying to figure that out. The residential for kids is a complicated question. There's not a lot to offer in the state, and it's hard to do well as a treatment provider. And the, and, and from a state lens and from a funder lens, which we are not either of those, sorry, kind of speak on the provider side, it's expensive. And so there's not a lot of investment in residential services in the state of Colorado, and that's probably true nationally for those reasons. Our approach has been to try to mitigate that with home-based care and intensive wraparound services that provide a lot of hours of service delivery over the course of week, of the week, but still occur in the community. Because it really doesn't make a lot of theoretical sense in most cases to send a kid to Nevada for problems that they're having in a particular environment, right? So we're, we're trying to work with that. There are cases where that needs to occur, but there's very few in the state of Colorado.
Counselor Tantio.
I'm glad to hear the word kiddo and kid and children almost every other sentence, because I, it sounds to me like it's a priority with you.
Yeah, it's one of our big deals.
One of the things that I'm particularly interested in is kids with dyslexia.
Yeah.
I have a grandson that was severely dyslexic, and from the time that he, he's in middle school now, but from the time he was in kindergarten, we got no services whatsoever from District 60. District 60 had no idea what we were talking about. And fortunately, my daughter researched and researched and learned and taught and, and got the services that he needed to, to progress. But the mental health issues that dyslexic children have are probably severe. We found out 20% of the kids in our, in school are dyslexic on the dyslexic platform someplace or other. And I ventured to guess that the problem children in the schools are probably dyslexic. I've talked to the school board about it, and they go, huh, they have no idea what they're talking about. Let me suggest that when you're dealing with children, that they get tested for dyslexia. Because I ventured to guess, because what happens in the schools is the kid doesn't know how to read, and, and he can't figure it out. So he gets put in the back because he's a problem child, and he stays in the back until he's ready to get out of school at the age of 16. By then, he's a, he's a criminal, and he's a real problem to society. And it all could have been circumvented if he would have been taught how to read at the age of five or six. And it's because they don't diagnose the dyslexia. And, uh, we really could see it. My daughter and I, we did, we worked together with my grandson. He's great now, but the point is that without the kind of intervention that he has, I ventured to guess that most of the kids, especially minority kids, don't get any kind of help whatsoever, and then they become the problem children that we see today.
It's an important component. My, I, I won't go off on a tirade about this. My wife and youngest both have dyslexia. And it, it's critical in the child development space, which is one reason why we're excited about the daycare option, because we're going to have that visibility to these issues and be able to bring in very specialized care that, you're exactly right. Sometimes the issue isn't the behavior. Most of the time, the issue isn't the behavior. That's symptomatic of something. But it becomes the target, right? The behavior becomes the target, and you're never really getting after the problem. Anecdotally, Malcolm Gladwell has a book called Slaying Giants, I think. There's a chapter in there on dyslexia that is amazing about, he, he does some case studies, success case studies on folks that, the adaptability that someone who suffers or struggles with that challenge is able to create and how it really becomes an asset over time. You may check that out.
My, my thinking is that a lot of the children that are having problems, mental health problems and behavioral problems.
Yeah. Yeah, there's an underlying source. Yeah, there's an underlying source. That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from counsel? Thank you so much, Mr. Chapeau and everyone from Health Solutions here today.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. The next item on our agenda is around responsible cannabis consumption. Do we have Stephen Duran and Jamie Del Vecchio? So just a reminder, this is a pretty packed agenda for the rest of the night. We have our friends at the clerk's office who will be timing everyone today. So just keep an eye on the time to make sure that we're sticking to the agenda. Thank you so much, and whenever you're ready.
Awesome. Thank you, counsel, for your time today. I'll let Jamie, Jamie present first, and I'll go after she's done.
So my name is Jamie. I recently came aboard, well, it's been about a year now, with Steve and Monique over at the seven one nine dispensary, that's what they're licensed under. And so we just wanted to, I've, I've noticed a lot of illegal and unhealthy for the community type of things going on. We have people that come into our, to the city, they come in, they legally purchase retail marijuana, and then they have nowhere to use it. So you, you find them in their car, in their, driving down the street at a park, getting in trouble for using at different, you know, hotels. There's not a lot of smoker-friendly cannabis-friendly hotels in the area. Which I feel like is a big problem. I feel, I feel that it's, it's detrimental to the, the children that walk past our store every day, or, you know, go play at the park where there's these people that had come from Texas, they make a purchase at a dispensary and then go smoke in public. I don't think it's, it's right, and I don't think it's fair to the community or to the children if they're not, if you're not wanting to partake, or it shouldn't be in your face. So I just feel like for the responsible adult use of cannabis, a consumption lounge would be ideal. This would give the, either the tourist, the, the person visiting our state, a place to go safely, be educated, and consume cannabis at the same time. You know, there are some, I feel like regulated spaces are crucial for, for medical patients who may live in government-funded, government-funded housing where use of marijuana is illegal, federal, federally illegal. Or even apartment complexes that are income-based, also federally illegal. So, I mean, that's, it's just kind of, there's a need for it. It would generate tax revenue. You know, the consumer from out of state, the non-resident could come in, purchase, and then have a safe place to, to consume the cannabis that they purchased. We would, could have people that are trained with the Responsible Vendor Program, teaching them about cannabis, teaching them how to use it safely. We could partner with different, you know, like the, the local taxi cab, that would help generate more revenue. So we would, we wouldn't have people driving around smoking or consuming or driving after consuming. Oh, you can go ahead and switch. Oh, it's mine. Sorry. So fitting the criteria for social equity, the state, the Marijuana Enforcement Division has brought along this social equity thing where they're trying to diversify the, the cannabis community, giving, you know, more minority, more women, just the opportunity to get into the, the industry. So we, being eligible for that, will feel that it's, it's time to open a consumption lounge or be allowed to open a consumption lounge where we can monitor the use of the cannabis and ensure that it's not being used on the streets here in Pueblo, or anywhere else for that matter. And we feel that because we are part of, we are a socialized, a social equity licensee, that it would just make sense for us to be able to do that under those terms. We were also the first medical license in the city back in 2015, in, within city limits. So regulated spaces, spaces are crucial, just like I had mentioned, you know, for government housing. And then there's a dilemma for no, not knowing where to go to be able to consume. I did reach out to several different hotels within the area, even in the Springs, and there aren't, there's nowhere that they can consume it. I feel like in consumption lounges will encourage people to purchase products, not on the black market, but from a legal retail store, and then use it just as responsibly in a sanctioned venue, as opposed to buying it on the black market and smoking it, driving down the street. It's just not safe for our, our community. A, a consumption lounge actually has the potential to be the safest place to consume and learn about dosing. A lot of people, I'm sure you've read the horror stories where someone will come from another state and they'll, they'll get some edibles or something and then won't have any knowledge on how to use the product, don't read the, the packaging, overtake it, and then get sick or panicky. With a consumption lounge and the Responsible Vendor Program, we would have staff there educating these consumers and helping them along with this, with consuming their cannabis. CBD, high CBD products, CBD-only products could be made available as those counteract the negative effects of the THC. So they can almost bring you down off of your high. For, for monitoring and things, California just adapted the Department of Alcohol, Alcoholic Beverage Control Intoxication Guidelines, and I feel like that's perfect. We could monitor their use, cut them off if needed, or when needed, and then make sure that they get home safe either by calling a cab, an Uber, you know, a, a family member, someone around that could pick them up and keep everyone safe. In 2018, Colorado did pass a bill saying that consumption lounges were okay. There are currently three licenses in the state, one, I'm sorry, two in Denver, one in Colorado Springs. And it just allows the permit of clubs and basically everything I've said as far as consumption. And there are strict guidelines, of course, that we would also follow. And then this is just some stats that I had gotten offline. I did reach out for some, but, for some more recent stuff, but I haven't gotten it unfortunately just yet. But as you can see, possession, consumption while within a vehicle, in 2019, there were eleven hundred citations for this. In 2020, there were thirty-one point four citations with marijuana-involved traffic violations. So, I think that's it. In conclusion, I feel like it's paramount for the city of Pueblo to allow a safe place for consumption of cannabis. Not only will it generate a large amount of tax revenue, but it'll offer a safe place to consume cannabis, educate the consumer, and assist greatly with the decline of driving while under the influence, thus keeping the community safer. It would also create jobs for, for the consumption lounge. And at the moment, we, we actually have the infrastructure to, to be able to move forward with that at the location that we currently have.
Hello, counsel. My name is Stephen Duran. I have been in business in the city of Pueblo since 2015. A little bit about myself and while I'm here. I was born and raised right here in Pueblo by a single mother. I was in and out of trouble all of my teenage years with behavioral issues. And I was also in and out of juvenile detention facilities. Cannabis is what saved me. I was able to focus and really start dealing with why I was having the issues. I was able to overcome my circumstances. At nineteen years old, I had my first daughter. I became a janitor for District sixty. I eventually started working towards my goals of opening a dispensary. Although it did not come without a set of challenges, we were able to cut through the miles of red tape, assisting in the development of processes to operate a cannabis dispensary in the city. And we were actually the first to open a dispensary in the city in 2015, and all credit to hard work, dedication, and drive. We're here tonight to ask the board to consider allowing our company, who we are, Social Equity Licenses, by the way, the opportunity to open a social consumption lounge. This will not only bring additional tax revenue to the city, it'll also help us to continue to grow and to compete with the bigger corporations who are currently operating in the Pueblo cannabis industry. This would ensure our company's success and longevity, and we currently do have a vacant space right next door to our dispensary that is ready to be occupied pending inspections and approvals. And it would be a perfect space for this model. Consumption lounges would be a great tourist attraction for our city and would help prevent issues, as Jamie's touched on in her presentation. We feel that social equity licensees such as ourselves could best benefit from this opportunity, because we are the people whose community has been negatively impacted by marijuana prohibition and enforcement. This gives us a chance to thrive within our community and show people just like us that there's another way out of the circumstances that they're currently in. And you can become successful right here in Pueblo. We are hyper-focused on our community involvement, and we invest a lot of time and effort in causes that are near and dear to us, such as Pueblo United, helping feed the community. We help schools with donations for their sports needs, as well as a Christmas bike giveaway we've been doing for the past five years for the kids who are less fortunate in our community. We want to build our community up and show people that with hard work and dedication, that you can achieve anything you put your minds to. We have been in business for six years, and we have been good players. We have developed great professional relationships with the city, and we have been responsible for all of our tax liabilities. We have worked hard to provide safe access to medicine that we believe in, following all rules and regulations set forth by the city and the state. We have demonstrated a positive impact on our community and feel that we would be a perfect fit for this opportunity. We'd also like to propose that this and any further licensing opportunities, such as deliveries, be limited to social equity licensee holders, much as Denver is currently doing for their social equity licensee holders. This would be a great benefit for our city in many ways and also keep marijuana businesses to a minimum. We want to thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you for that presentation. What questions and comments are there from counsel? Counselor Winter.
Have you been to any of these businesses in Denver?
I have been in one of them, yes. So Medicine Men has one, I believe, that is what, it's been years, back in 2018 when they allowed it.
What about Springs? Doesn't Springs have a couple?
They had one.
I don't believe any of them are actually regulated through marijuana enforcement. I believe they're operating in like a gray area, basically. But they have been operating there for some time, actually, and I believe there's, they're down to one maybe at this point, but they are not actually marijuana business licensed. They're not licensed through MED.
Okay, okay. Um, there, there's some restaurants in California, you're probably aware of this, but that actually pair food with marijuana. And, I mean, there, it's expensive, fine dining, and, I mean, I don't, I don't think you have that in mind, but...
Actually, I did. I just kind of, I wanted to touch on the more key points that were, you know, safety for, I don't know how many times I'm driving down the street and I see trash from dispensaries, drams, you know, little joint containers, just, it's, they're not following the, the rules. So safety for the community, I feel like is, should be number one.
Yeah.
But in my presentation, I did speak on that, where we could collaborate with restaurants or, you know, food vendors. We could do nights where we teach, come on down and we'll teach you all about what we, what we know about cannabis and how to safely use it and consume it.
Sure, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I think that, I think that all of us should probably check one out. If maybe we could at least go to Springs, maybe we could do a field trip and take a look at them. Thanks.
And just real quick, guys, I would recommend possibly maybe going to Denver, just because then you could get a real true model of what we're trying to achieve. It is highly regulated, it is licensed through marijuana enforcement. And you know, just, just so you're aware, all of the, the stuff Jamie's talking about in consumption, people driving around in them cars, at public parks, in hotels, these are all illegal to consume. So we are trying to provide a legal outlet. We're selling people cannabis, and we're saying, hey, basically go use it illegally, but we're gonna turn the blind eye. It's time that we start giving these people, you know, they're coming here, spending their money here, giving us tax revenue here. I believe that we need to really give them an opportunity to consume in a legal space, a responsible venue, where we can really, you know, provide them with all the education, all the resources that they really need to consume in a safe environment.
Counselor Flores.
I wanted to ask our city attorney, Mr. Kogosik. The first thing that comes to mind in a state of five million people, that only three consumption lounges have been approved, it's, it must be very, very hard to do, and lots of hoops that you have to go through. Are you familiar with what, number one, whether or not we have the authority within the city, in our municipal codes and our city charter, to be able to approve a consumption lounge?
It's allowed under state law. We would have to enact another section of our marijuana code to allow hospitality businesses to get licensed here. But it's legal. We would just have to create a new category, as Denver did, for hospitality businesses.
Yeah, you know, when you first think about only three in our state, your first thought is that it must be a high bar to reach. Why aren't they flourishing, I guess?
The state law says that if you buy cannabis at a particular location, you then can take that cannabis and consume it on the premises if it's been identified. So you cannot bring your own cannabis or cannabis from another dispensary to, to be consumed. And there are, of course, ventilation and, and other restrictions placed on it. And I, that might be the, the cost and the recovery of profit really may not match up.
I, I could see a zoning problem too, especially with people that don't want near, to be near one.
Well, it has to be, it has to be located on the premises of a licensed dispensary. So, you know, seven one nine is zoned correctly, and if they have space, they can apply for, you know, hospitality license as well.
You had a comment, Mr. Duran?
Yes, sir, I did. You know, just to touch on your question a little bit, a big reason, you know, why it's kind of limited is, is there, there's a ton of regulatory tape, as with anything in cannabis. And at this juncture, you know, really, you have to really be a multimillionaire to enter the cannabis industry. So you know, that's why Denver's taking the stance that they've taken with social equity, and, and really, really are targeting social equity licensees at this point to try to, to even out the demographics of cannabis ownership, which is really, really lopsided at this point. I did bring you guys some info pertaining to ownership and how stagnant it's been since 2018, that I'll leave with you, you know, when we part from here. But I definitely think that, you know, with the consumption lounges, we can really, really, you know, take care of the consumer, really give... But I definitely think that, you know, with the consumption lounges, we can really, really, you know, take care of the consumer, really give them a good place to come in. And do this legally. It is already mapped out for us as per the state. I think just as a city, we really need to work together and come up with, you know, how do we see this working in the city? You know, so we can, we're all on board with it and it's, it's a positive thing.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Atencio.
You said that it would be a positive for the city in terms of tax, uh, revenue. How does a consumption, uh, place make money? Uh, when they would be buying it from your retail store anyway. And they're going to be buying it and leaving. They're going to be buying it and going into, uh, isn't that just an extra expense for you? Cause I, I don't see them, okay, I'm going to buy it and I'm going to go next door and smoke it. Uh, they could buy it and the same people that buy it are going to buy it and then they're going. How do you, how, how do you make income?
Yeah, well, so, so that's the whole thing is they currently do buy it and they currently leave because they have nowhere to consume it. So a lot of the out of town people come in and, and just like Jamie's saying, they have to go in their vehicles and consume it. They have to go to a park and consume it. These are all illegal. So what we plan on doing is offering some sort of membership. Um, deal to where they would be able to come in, you know, we would have accessories for sale. We'd have merch for sale. Um, stuff like that for them to, um, consume their cannabis in, if you would, pipes, you know, et cetera.
No, okay.
Counselor Martinez Ortega.
Yeah, Jamie, Stephen, Stephen, thanks for the presentation. Um, I just wanted to tell you, thank, I, my answer, my questions were answered. Through some of the questions here, but, uh, thanks for bringing this up. Um, it is something that you kind of think about. Um, it's like, well, what happens after the dispensary, especially to those folks who are from out of town? And I do think that folks, much like a bar or a hookah lounge or anything like that, folks will go there. To specifically buy and consume there. Um, as opposed to just buying a little bit and going home. It's almost like a socializing, uh, area. And so I could see how it could generate more business than just, uh, grab and go. Thank you.
Counselor Warner.
Yeah, this was brought up, uh, back in twenty sixteen and I don't think council was very open to it. But, um, I, I think we've, you know, cannabis has come a long way since then as well. Um, also, I think there was some pushback from the health department. You might be aware of this, uh, with the smoking, but I really don't see it much different than a cigar lounge or a cigar club. Um, I know that these restaurants, the fine dining that I was talking about, they have to, um, do a one-time membership or a monthly or yearly membership. Where they're signing off, um, like, like you do with a cigar, a cigar lounge. And, um, generally there's alcohol going along with your cigar lon- lounge as well, but, um, anyway, that's all.
Mayor.
Just the, uh, carryover members will recall that, uh, we, we had started these discussions, uh, in the early part of two thousand and twenty. In fact, we were going to have a demonstration. Somebody's going to bring, uh, I forgot what the name of the company is at this point, a lounge down that they were taking. Uh, to concerts and those kinds of things that would fulfill this very purpose. Um, at that time, we surveyed the retail stores and it turns out in, in the city of Pueblo. The retail stores, about fifty percent of the customers of those stores were not from the city of Pueblo. So it's exactly as Mr. Duran said, they got nowhere to legally consume this product. Um, so we were just starting to have those discussions and COVID hit and obviously. Nobody wanted to talk about anybody being together under any circumstances when, when that happened. So it just sort of died at that point, but. Um, if there's an interest on council, we can certainly dust off that and, and come back. I, I think it would increase the tax revenue for the city. Um, it, this is the kind of thing, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been a long time since I looked at it, but. Um, you can't leave that premises with any product, correct? You buy the product in that lounge and you can't leave with it. You have to consume it there. So it's not like people can take it by a large quantity and take it with them when they leave. They have to consume whatever they have right in the lounge there. So, and. The city attorney indicated it had to be a licensed marijuana, uh, dispensary, but I think you can have that license independently, can you not?
Yes, you, you can. Um, they, they have set up other, um, venues for it, basically where, where they can operate. But the thing about it is where, uh, where you are correct is that it has to be a, a licensed marijuana. So the consumption lounge itself is a licensed marijuana business. So that's what we're talking, you have to be licensed.
And, and I was interested in Colorado Springs because Colorado Springs doesn't even allow retail marijuana.
Yes.
So this is not a licensed premises in Colorado Springs?
No, they do not have any, any retail at all in the spring. So it's basically a gray area is what they've been operating ha- as. And I know they've had, they, they haven't had very many problems with consumers, but they've had a lot of regulatory issues basically because it's a gray area.
There's a lot of data that shows that, um, the more that a community normalizes cannabis use, the earlier initiation of. Young people that use cannabis. I'm curious if you have any data that shows that the three sites that are already open. If there's any data that shows that those three sites, what their youth substance use is compared to the rest of communities.
So I did request that information. I, I haven't received it back yet. So, um, I definitely can get that to you all as soon as I do get it back.
Counselor Atencio.
Uh, in my time, I used to teach, uh, sociology and one of the subjects was, uh, underage drinking, smoking, the whole thing. And one of the lessons I used to teach was every single one of us has been in our backyard at a barbecue. And Uncle Bob gives little Johnny a beer at the age of five and everybody goes, oh, how cute. Little Johnny figures out, oh, this is really cute. By the time he's twelve, thirteen, he's smoking, drinking, drugging and everything else. And then people wonder why in the hell, but little Johnny did it is because Uncle Bob and everybody else normalized him at the age of five. That's the reason, not because of marijuana, uh, retail stores.
No, no, and it, it's a true statement, you know, um, you know, just so we're clear, I'm born and raised in Pablo. Uh, I have cannabis has been around since I'm eleven years old, you know, prevalent, you know, black market. So when we talk about testing and regulating and we talk about the legal industry, we're giving consumers now something that they, they know what's in this product. When you're talking to black market product, you're getting it from just anybody on the street. So it's, it's, it's a real big difference. And, um, you know, I, I think honestly, to touch on that point a little bit, that. It, it's a responsibility factor for adults. This is a response, it's just like alcohol. It's up to you as an adult to make sure you're not over consuming. It's making, as an adult, it's up to us to go to a bar and make sure that we don't have too many drinks and drive home drunk. And I believe we're in the same case when we're talking about cannabis. It's about, um, being responsible.
Okay. Well, and with that training, you know, when these people come into our, our store and, and then our can- if the cannabis lounge. We can give them knowledge, you know, y- your brain isn't developed fully to consume cannabis until you're twenty-one years old or. You know, just kind of educate them more and let them see.
Counselor Maestri.
And so you understand that there's a lot of liability that goes with that, just like there are in the bars. Now all of a sudden you're saying here that you're going to provide somebody an Uber or taxi home. Is that coming from you? Would that take away from your business? I mean, they could be using, consuming. What about the people who come from out of state in their car?
It would be much like any bar. So, um, in, in the, the law. Or in the bill that they passed, it actually, I want to say that it refers to not being held liable if someone does. Overdo it.
So it's not liable on you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, it really boils down to being a responsible adult. If you know you're going to go consume. It's up to you to know that how much you're consuming and that's where we're going to provide education and say. For, for edibles for existence, you know, let, let's start off with two milligrams. That's typically our safe go-to and that's how we typically educate customers. Cause once you overdo it, it's over with. You know, you can always build up, but you can never come down. So you know, it's a matter of just like giving the people the real knowledge that's out there. But it's more a thing of responsibility as adults. It's up to us as adults to consume responsibly. Same with alcohol, same with prescription pills or anything we talk about.
So then you would have less liability than a, a bar?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, and, and we would, a club has the same immunity to a lawsuit for injury caused by a club. As, as a bar does, essentially in the bill summary.
Counselor Flores.
Just to clarify, when, when you, uh, are in the liquor business, whether it's, uh. Retail liquor store or a bar or even a restaurant. Uh, you can help, you can be held legally liable for allowing someone to consume too much alcohol as a business and you can be sued. Are you saying that you have immunity from that? Because if, if, uh, I, I would imagine that it would be similar. Uh, that if you would allow someone to consume too much marijuana, you, you could be held legally liable. For being in the stream of causing, uh, say an accident on the freeway that killed somebody. Um, so I, I'm not sure that you might be interpreting that correctly. But that would be a liability that you would have, assuming you had the license to do this.
Sure.
And you'd have to be very careful that, that you didn't allow people to, uh, overconsume.
Yes, sir. That is a true statement. You know, if we ever did see someone that was overly intoxicated. That would definitely like she's recommending be an Uber called, be a taxi called, be precautionary measures taken.
And cut people off, just, just like bars would do.
Thank you, Mr. Duran and Mr. Vecchio for your time. We're going to move on, um, to our next, yeah, you can just go ahead and pass it up. We're going to, uh, move on to pub- public forum, uh, discussion. So do we have Mr. Gloss to the podium?
Excuse me, were, were we going to, uh, kind of take the temperature to see if we wanted to move forward with this or? What, what was the, the goal?
Oh, sorry, mayor.
You know, we, um, as I say, we, we were exploring that when COVID hit. Obviously, it seems like there might be an interest from these parties at least and probably. There's an interest from other parties as well, but it'll take a while to, uh, to flesh out the requirements, the rules, the regulations. Find out where they're going to be allowed. You know, I personally think you ought to be downtown where people can access them by foot. Uh, you know, some of the visitors and conventioneers that are here so that they can walk to them and those kinds of things. I mean, that's all. The kind of things that have to be discussed as, as we move forward. So if, if the council wants to consider that, then I, I. You know, we're happy to spend the time and, and do some work on that if you think it's a good idea.
So the offer on the table was for council to give recommendation on moving forward or not?
Yes.
Well, moving forward to research it, not moving forward to do it.
Well, yes, that's, that's what he said.
I, I think that's what he said. I think it's just, uh.
Counselor Flores.
I just wanted to say, I think it's just a matter of reviving information that we already had back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen. And just to, so everybody is on at least, uh, on the same, uh, starting point. Cause I think you developed a lot of information on this back in two thousand and sixteen, as I recollect.
Wasn't sixteen, uh, because I think it only became legal in nineteen, maybe.
Yeah, I, I got the date, I got.
In eighteen it was passed and that's when they became legal. I thought there was a year waiting period. Okay, I'm just going by memory.
Yeah, so we just, we just need to catch up.
I, I would need a lot more information. I don't even know what, uh, what was it? Responsible Equity?
Social Equity.
Social Equity Dispensary? I have no idea what that is.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a social equity license and it's right there in that packet I gave to you. Um, basically, you know, it's, it's, uh, cannabis ownership. At this point, we're just talking cannabis industry. I believe it's eighty-four percent. Uh, white owned, uh, it's about seven to ten percent minority own, you know, ownership in cannabis businesses. So when they're talking social equity, they're basically trying to even the playing field when we're talking about minority ownership. And you know what it looks like in the industry.
Well, that's a whole different subject than what we're talking about. It has nothing to do with lounges.
Well, I think what we're asking is for council to consider possibly if we do, uh, go forward with consumption lounges. Or any licensing of deliveries or anything that we ask council to do much as Denver has done. And that is limited to social equity licensees. Limited, limit the licenses to social equity licensees.
Counselor Maestri.
Just a little clarification, mayor, because, um. Mr. Kavosik said that as long, it, you know, was be tied to the existing dispensaries. So there, there, therefore there wouldn't be any zoning issues. And now you talk about moving them downtown.
I disagree. I don't think it has to be tied to an existing dispensary. It has to be a license, it becomes a licensed marijuana premises.
So does it be, so d- does that mean we would be expanding our eight licenses that we have now?
You wouldn't be expanding the eight retail licenses because the people would not be able to remove the cannabis from that. Uh, premises. They'd have to consume whatever they buy on that premises. So you wouldn't be exta- expanding the retail stores.
Okay, so would it be similar to like what they were saying, the gray area up in Springs?
No, it wouldn't be a gray area if it was licensed. I, I mean, it wouldn't be a gray area. We'll, we'll have to research that. I, I heard what Mr. Kugosik said. My recollection is, and I'm going by memory as I said, is that it doesn't have to be.
So you'd have to, you'd have to move it into a zone that maybe is not zoned for marijuana use now. If you want to move it downtown, are we zoned for marijuana use downtown? I mean, licenses downtown?
Sure, I think we are. There's one on Fourth Street. Now, I'm, I'm not sure what the zoning is, but there's a retail marijuana store on Fourth Street, the four oh four. So, yeah, but the zoning is all part of what has to be figured out. If we want to move forward on this, where's an appropriate place to put them? Yeah.
Yeah, I think maybe we need to have a continual work session about it, given how many questions there are and the social equity. Um, part of it as well. So are we okay to then schedule it for continuous work session?
Okay.
Okay, the next on the agenda is a, a public forum discussion by, uh, Mr. Gloss.
Uh, good evening again. So I, uh, I'm Assistant City Attorney, Trevor Gloss. I was asked to speak briefly about, uh, public forums. Um, so as you know, every council, well, before the regular council meetings, we have a public forum. Um, this packet right here, the first page is a little, is a, uh, article that came out from C M L last month. It's a little bit about public forums, uh, the law of the farm, how they're kind of held. Also, you'll see, uh. The, what, uh, the nine other major cities in Colorado have on public forums. You'll notice that they're all very simple. They only regulate the time, place and manner of public forums. They don't speak to the content. Uh, any signup sheets they have are really just, uh, boxes for names. They don't actually have any restrictions on what folks can say or anything like that. Hours, uh, the city of Pueblos. Has, uh, a lot more on, uh, on it than anyone else's actually. And, uh, those are more requests. They aren't, uh, so much restrictions. So public forums, uh, in First Amendment law are, well, something called a public forum. Which basically means that citizens who speak during those times have, uh, broad rights when it comes to free speech. The city as a government entity can only limit, uh, speech in the, in these situations in three ways. Uh, time, place and manner. So time, we limit them to three to five minutes depending on the situation. Uh, place, here in council chambers during, uh, at the appointed hour. Then manner, city council has certain procedures on how all of this is supposed to happen. You'll notice that these nine other cities, they all regulate those same things. They don't go towards the content of the speech. Um, due to recent case law and longstanding tradition, uh, content-based restrictions on speech. So if you're trying to limit people on, um, certain topics or things like that. Those are almost per se, uh, unconstitutional nowadays. We really can't do that. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about public forums and, uh, First Amendment free speech in this case.
Counselor Flores.
You know, the most contentious stuff that I face since I've been on city council has been controversial issues, but with people that come outside of the jurisdiction the city council has. You know, we've had people, you know, when we had the controversy over our animal shelter, it seemed like half of the people that were complaining to us lived out in the county. We had no jurisdiction. We were not their representatives. The county commissioners were, but they were constantly here telling us what we should be doing. And we had several other contentious issues of people from other cities. We even had an issue with the red flag law, in which we had people from even out of state that came and read us the riot act. So the question really is, you know, does a city council that represents a city of Pueblo with a boundary, should we allow people that are not in our jurisdiction to come and speak before us and tell us what we should and should not be doing?
Basically, limiting it only to citizens. So the concern there is, there is a good amount of case law saying that you can't, well, when it comes to free speech, you can't limit people based on where they're coming from. It's a restricted form of, well, limitation. Sorry, I could phrase that better. I can't cite for you the law on that, just because it comes up so rarely, but it is generally prohibited. People are allowed to speak from anywhere, as long as it's a public forum. And it's not really something you can limit normally. If they want to give their address, voluntarily give that, that's something they can do. I don't I'm not sure if it's something that should be required in a practical sense, just because people may feel like you're infringing on their privacy. They may have some concerns there. For example, if a law enforcement officer got up to speak about an issue, they may now want their address coming up in the public record, things like that. So there are other concerns and situations like that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Sorry, Mr. Kavosik.
Oh, I'm sorry. I agree with what Trevor said, but we also have a procedural problem. The current public forum ordinance was passed in an election. And the charter says that when the municipal code is changed by the voters, it can't be changed by council. It has to go back to the voters. So the current one does not have a restriction on who can speak in terms of where you live. So for us to change that, we would have to procedurally go back and have another election. So that's separate from Trevor's First Amendment analysis, which is what I agree with.
Counselor Mastry.
Yes, that's what I learned at a conference this weekend, that we as a council can actually make that change. But like you said, because of previous things that have been done, we have to make, actually put it up for the people to vote on. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Winters.
The public forum registration sheet does require an address, so the, I mean, I don't know what difference that makes, but it's, they have to put it right here on the sheet.
I don't think it's required. The language on the sheet doesn't say that an address is required.
Yeah, no, it, yeah. Other questions or comments from council? On this? Okay, I appreciate all the information and the case studies. Mr. Gloss, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next several presentations are all going to revolve around ARPA. For those that are presenting, just a reminder that there is a 10-minute presentation and 5-minute for questions. So our first ARPA presentation is going to be from Co-Cree around broadband infrastructure. So do we have Mr. Akuna and Ms. Atkins Shori to the podium, please? It happens all the time. It's okay. Whenever you both are ready.
So we just control the slide deck right here. Okay. Okay, well, first off, thank you for allowing us to come and present. We started this work with respect to broadband and digital equity and inclusion. We started a dialogue past, this last June. And as it evolved, we scaled our perspective with respect to what we're going to do and what we would like to do. So as we look at this proposal, you'll have the proposal here. You'll have three handouts. The handout will be is an executive summary. Another handout is a community data analysis on 19 census tracts in Central Pueblo, and the other is going to be a data sheet which related to COVID. So basically, our background, Denise and I, we've, we're working under the umbrella of Co-Create, my company. We have worked and collaborated on broadband and different projects for about 20 years. And so we bring in a background with an extensive background in broadband. We, 35 years of work in that area, 30 years of launching strategic initiatives throughout the state, statewide, nationally, and so done some international work. And so we've looked at our approach with this comprehensively, not only on the broadband side, but also on the programmatic piece. And so what has happened is that now, within the scope of what's happening now with the infrastructure bill, we now have a tremendous opportunity in front of us for Pueblo and for communities throughout Southern Colorado. There'll be $65 billion in the infrastructure bill. Bill, 45 of that will be administered to the National Telecommunications Information Administration. And so that's where we're kind of targeting as some of the, as an opportunity with respect to how we move forward. So in doing that, we designed a proposal where we wanted to clarify a vision for Pueblo. And the project is called the Pueblo Opportunity Project. It's to create an environment at Pueblo, the Pueblo community, where programs, policies, and resources are in place to support the broadband, digital inclusion, equity, and literacy needs for Pueblo neighborhoods to thrive. One of the key situation here is that because of the funding opportunity and the fact that there is a significant lack of some connectivity and access in Pueblo and Southern Colorado, that it's a tremendous opportunity, and it's also a point of transition where we're really going to need to be able to do this, right? It's something that, that it's, it has to be done with respect to some of the underserved and not served communities in this area. So what we want to do is look at a new system and be able to move towards that. We want to look at an environment where we got affordable broadband service options, affordable device ownership programs, multilingual digital literacy and digital skill training that meet community needs, hardware and software support, digital navigation services to guide residents to the above services, and resource development, a strategic granting strategy to be able to approach the funding opportunity that exists that we have before us. And what we're looking at, we know that we're looking at one year now, but we're looking at a five-year project, and we believe that we can procure close to $20 million in this space, okay? And Denise will go ahead and talk about some of the data with respect to what we're looking at.
So COVID highlighted issues around broadband that nobody in the nation really understood until we were at home and needed to communicate with each other. So the slide that we have here talks about the needs around connectivity and being able to communicate and broadband uses and needs across the country, and how COVID has really highlighted that and really pushed us down this path that we probably won't go back to the old ways that we did things completely. We'll probably find a nicer middle ground than we had to do at first. But you can look at this and see a number of pieces. For example, school districts, when we would talk, because I'm come from the education side of things, we would talk and we would say, all our kids are covered. Kids have email addresses. We know they have internet connectivity because they have an email address. When COVID hit, we found out that, yeah, they had an email address, but they had no way to connect to use it when they were at home. So all of a sudden, the way we look at things and the way we understand things are much different. We know that businesses look at broadband connectivity when they want to locate in the neighborhood or in an area. And that is, more than half of the time, a reason a business decides to relocate out of your area is because there isn't good connectivity, and that's a national kind of thing. So if you go to the next slide, let's talk a little bit about the needs in Pueblo. We used a map, and we've included that map. It's the back page. It's the one with a lot of red on it. And the National Telecommunications and Information Agency created an interactive map that talks about the indicators of broadband need, and you can actually go into that map. It's the last page on the inside. You can go into that map and enter in a census tract. Oh, it's probably go ahead and pull it up if you got it.
Yeah, it's on slide deck.
Yeah, so we know that we know that this map shows indicators of need for broadband. And if we look at Pueblo, the city of Pueblo, there's a lot of red in Pueblo, where certain census tracts do not have connectivity in the city itself. As much as 28% of the neighborhood, or the people in certain neighborhoods, don't have connectivity. And so as a whole, the city may look good if we look at huge numbers, but if we look at specific neighborhoods and census tracts, some of them don't have connectivity. Red is, go ahead.
With respect to red, the red is really, for example, is bad. Pink is kind of bad, but not quite real bad. And the green area, which is on the periphery, where's Bland, Goodnight area, Al Camino, Belmont, and some of the Norizeros is where the connectivity is acceptable and okay. And what this map reflected is, the National Telecommunications Information Administration put out an RFP. We submitted a proposal in partnership with CSUP. It's called the Connecting Minority Communities Program. We submitted a proposal for $3 million, and what they did, they predefined certain areas according to GPS mapping that clarified connectivity, clarified usage of devices, and poverty. So basically, what you have here is the red, red is the Y-zone that we all familiar with. In this area that we highlighted with this data sheet that you have right here is 19 of 34 census tracts. 34 census tracts were identified because of the poverty level. It reached a poverty level that you can apply for the proposal to target your services for those specific 34 census tracts because of poverty. This is just, the data you have here is just 19 of the 34 in the central area. So the data points that you have right here, for example, is 28, almost 29% of those 19 in the Central Pueblo red area do not have internet connectivity. Okay? 33.7%.
What do you mean by connectivity?
They're not connected. They don't have internet access. They're not, yeah.
It might be available, but it's not.
Yeah, they're not connected.
We didn't go into the reason for it. It might be affordability. It might be that it doesn't exist at a high enough speed, because a lot of the areas are areas of poverty, and sometimes they don't get updated as quickly, because there's not the money that's going to come back. So that we didn't, NTIA didn't address that issue. More important, these people are not able to connect at the moment, and they do not have computers or smartphones. Almost one in five of them, more than 20% of them, don't have a way to connect, even if they did have. And that's part of the digital equity in the digital literacy and inclusion pieces that we talk about. There may be broadband within the area, but if we don't help people understand how to use it, and we don't let them move to the levels that maybe we're used to, that doesn't help. So we have to do not only connections.
I mentioned, yes, that Xfinity and all the other companies have connectivity to the neighborhoods, but the people in the neighborhoods can't connect to them.
But we need to do the literacy, equity, and inclusion kinds of pieces to make that work. And that's the pieces that we're talking about. And I know we're running out of time. We kind of got off track a bit, but I'll let you.
Go back, go back about these slides.
So I'm done. Yeah, go ahead.
Basically, when we look at the programmatic piece, we want to make sure that we want to look and create an environment where there's going to be robust, reliable, and quality internet access services. And the example is that we've been expansion to Wi-Fi networks or free Wi-Fi in public housing communities. There are certain areas that we can be able to enable this type of service, and that's one of the things that we'll be looking at in programs that support the adoption of internet services where services unavailable or inadequate. And then also special programs to address economic development, workforce development, transportation, housing, education, and the Internet of Things. What's going to happen with the funding is that it's going to be, you're going to have a variety of different funding opportunities specific to those community segments. Okay, for example, housing, significant. Telehealth, significant. Okay, civic engagement, working with governments is going to be significant. So one of the things that we're going to do with respect to what we would like to do is to be able to move in a direction to where we sit back and we target these four major funding areas. Okay, the funding opportunities from the Infrastructure Investment Act, $65 billion. Mentioned that. 45 billion are specifically going to go to broadband across the country, digital inclusion, and equity programs. So it's not just providing the internet connectivity, it's the supporting and able programmatic pieces that will enable connectivity for people to learn. Okay? And then private and public foundations, Knight Foundation, anybody who funds equity. Got a variety of different funders that are on the foundation side that be able to do this. Anybody who really looks to the equity funding will do this. For example, Colorado Trust, they do health equity. But now they realize that the health equity, a major determinant of health is the fact that the lack, is the lack of connectivity to the internet. So it's a significant opportunity with respect to that. The four areas of our strategy are going to be the crediting and alliance stakeholder and community. The four areas of our strategy are going to be the align, creating an alliance, stakeholder and community engagement. In order to strategically develop this, you need to create an alliance, do the front end planning with the variety of different segments to be ready to put together the proposals, because we don't, we want to be able to go after significant proposals. We fish, just finished one with CSUP for 3 million, we're in the middle of one right now, that's 5.7. Okay, but in order to do that, the front end planning to create the collaboration, to great the partnerships is essential. So that's one of the reasons why we want to develop an alliance in and around the Pueblo Opportunity Project. Two, the strategic grant granting and revenue generation, Internet of Things and sustainability. We'll be developing a comprehensive granting and sustainability strategy for this. Three, strategy, community strategic planning and program development. We have to create the programmatic piece on the front end so that the granting can enable that, right? So that's another piece. And then finally, the project marketing, we have to be able to promote. We got to be able to market it because one of the things with doing this is you're taking the target population that does not know, so you have to create the messaging to enable what the opportunity really means to them so that they will accept and be able to say, okay, I do want to connect, I do want to be able to have internet access. I want to be able to be able to leverage that because right now they're not doing that. So the strategic marketing and social marketing, what they call, is very important within the play of this.
A good example, a good example is we have a program that just sunsetted in the country to provide $50 to help people make, pay for their internet connection. The new program is called the Affordable Connectivity Program, ACP, that will give anyone that's 200% above the poverty line, $30 a month to help pay for their internet bill. In in Pueblo, we have 7,000 people that have signed up for those programs, but like more than 50,000 people are are qualified to sign up for it. We need to get the word out, we need to help them get connected and help them understand how to use it and take advantage of the opportunities that they have. So that's one very small example of the kinds of things that we'll be able to do. And it will cross lots of different pieces. Economics and workforce, healthcare, education. So that's there's a lot of different pieces, broadband touches everything and we think that we can make it something that is much more robust, reliable and affordable in Pueblo.
Thank you for that presentation. What, Councilor Graham? How much are you asking for?
$100,000.
Councilor Flores?
I'm a little bit familiar with the grant that you submitted. When do you hear about whether or not you're the recipient of that?
We should, initially, we were supposed to get a response this week. But what's happening is NTIA is going to be administering $45 billion of the broadband money for the infrastructure bill. So it's been delayed because they're trying to ramp up to be able to get, put things in place to begin the distribution of what that's going to look like. So we're figuring we should find out, I believe we should hear by the end of this month. You know, and they've already requested more information from us, which is really good, that was outside of the NOFO, which is the funding opportunity.
Are you feeling good that you're going to get this grant?
Yeah, I think when we did it, we, when we did the proposal, we, we worked with the president, the provost, everybody on 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 CSUP's Presidential Counsel Group. And they felt really good and the fact that they did request more information from us is a good sign. Usually, if you're denied, we may have already, probably already heard by now, but we feel pretty good about the proposal.
Is the 5.7 million you've submitted a grant to, is that in the same program or a different program?
It would be with the National Science Foundation, NSF.
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the hard part about the broadband monies. It's not one bucket and you get to dip in. It's a little bit for everybody, so making sure that we work with everybody so they're ready. So housing can apply when housing grants are open. We've missed the opportunity for a couple opportunities, the middle mile and some pieces that we could have applied for. Those buckets opened and closed already, so we're feeling the need to be, you know, hit the ground running.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you so much for your presentation. The next ARPA presentation that we have is from PDPE regarding premium pay. So do we have Mr. Evans and Ms. Alfonso to the podium, please?
My, on I?
You're good.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, I'm here tonight with a very brief presentation. As you know, we've been, the Health Department has been responding to the pandemic for the past two years. Most of our PDPE employees have been involved and redeployed to support those activities. Things like testing, vaccination, registration at those sites, safety, staffing, the Emergency Operations Center, case investigation and contact tracing, enforcement, collecting data, answering phones, a whole number of other activities. We are proposing through the ARPA funding to to give our staff a premium pay of about $1.16 per hour. And this would be for those staff who were employed between April 1st of 2020 and March 31st of 2021. That comes out to about 65 full-time employees, plus there were a number of part-time employees and a number of employees who started during that time, but didn't weren't, didn't work the full year, so those would be prorated. The total cost is $182,742. We have, this is a joint proposal to the city and county. And so the cost, we are proposing the cost will be split for a total of 91,371 per city and county. And the Board of County Commissioners has reviewed and approved to 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 pay half of that amount. And that's our request.
Any questions or comments from council? Councilor Flores?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment and that is that the city-county Health Department is really a function that normally takes places within cities that really control their own health departments. You know, they can combine them like we do, or a lot of times they fall as a department within a city or a county. So, you know, I strongly believe that the Health Department workers were frontline workers, no different than our police department or our firemen. And I really believe that this is a very valid request because when you stop to think about the people that were out there, the first and exposed themselves, whether they were vaccinating other people or testing them, they were right there along with the same way the police department, the fire department did. So I strongly endorse what you're doing here because I think they certainly deserve it and hope that, you know, at the time that we can get this approved, I'll be voting yes for it.
Other questions or comments, Councilor Tencio?
I believe we're the only Health Department in the state that has a city-county functioning thing. Most, every other Health Department is a county function.
I believe that's correct. I think Broomfield may be set up some, in a similar way to us. I'm not exactly sure there, how they're set up, but similar.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Evans, thank you, Ms. Alfonso. The next presentation is around YWCA daycare. So do we have Dr. White and Ms. Royals?
Good evening, I am Dr. Maureen White, I am the Executive Director at the YWCA Pueblo. Thank you so much for having us here today. With me is Brenda Broyles, our Operations and Development Director. And we are here to talk to you about establishing a daycare center for our clients, employees and eventually to the community of Pueblo. If you have a PowerPoint, I don't know if that's. Recognizing that there are some new council members, we just wanted to familiarize you with the work that we do at the YWCA Pueblo. Our mission is to eliminate racism, empower women and promote peace and justice, freedom and dignity for all. We primarily provide domestic violence services for individuals who are encountering domestic violence, family violence, dating violence, including human trafficking, sexual assault. We offer critical services to the community of Pueblo for individuals who are experiencing these acts of violence. And our primary ways that we're serving the community are through our shelter, where we are able to house upwards of 22 women and children in shelter. We have also, since the pandemic has started, have seen a huge increase in the number of people that we're needing to serve. So are having the last year, I've spent around $25,000 in providing hotel rooms for clients because our shelter has been at capacity the majority of the time since we've started through the pandemic. Our main goal is to promote self-sufficiency in the individuals that we serve so that they are able to become contributing members of the community, leave their situations and be able to be successful as they move forward from this incidence that is requiring our services. So some of the services that we provide besides the shelters, Teresa's Place, which is our visitation center and Safe Exchange Center, we also provide adult and child counseling in a partnership with Health Solutions, they have a clinician in our facility who provides services. We provide healthy relationship classes for youth. We also do forensic interviewing, that's another partnership that we have, adult forensic interviewing with the Pueblo Child Advocacy Center. We provide educational classes in conjunction with Catholic charities to be able to help individuals in the areas of finance, job preparedness and such. And then we also utilize volunteers on a regular basis to come in and help us fulfill our our mission of being able to provide services to the community. Just some quick stats for you. In this last year, we provided over 5,000 shelter nights. We served over 14,000 meals. We had over 300 women and children in shelter and we responded to 633 crisis calls. We do have a 24-hour crisis line that people are able to call when they're needing services. So one of the things that we are doing with this proposal is that we moved Teresa's Place, our Safe Exchange and Visit Center to a new location so that we could utilize where they were prior and develop that into a daycare center. And so the YWCA has in the past provided daycare services to the community, but at one point, a couple executive directors ago, decided that they were to stop that service. Well, over the last two years with the pandemic, I've spent a lot of time discussing with my board and my team, what are the needs? What are the gaps for individuals that we are serving in domestic violence situations? And there have been a couple. The one here that we're presenting is the lack of qualified daycare for our clients to be able to have somewhere safe for their children to be while they're out working, attending court cases or even getting services for themselves. And so through that, we've decided that it's time for us to get back into the daycare area and start providing daycare services again. We also know that childcare in Colorado is, has seen a decrease in quality childcare providers. And we really feel like this is an area that we can excel and really provide a safe place for families to be able to come to get those needs met. What we're planning on doing is to open a childcare center at one of our sites. This will be for employees and victims of crimes such as domestic violence. We will allow parents, this will allow parents to seek employment, attend appointments and such with that. We do eventually hope to open us up to the general public. As we expand our services, we want to start smaller and then become larger instead of going for a huge operation that we're not able to sustain. We'd rather start smaller and then work our way up from that point. Our ask is for 200,000 for that, it would be, we'd be working towards a level four standard of care for the Colorado Shines Quality Rating. We would serve diverse ages, recognizing that there's a need from infants all the way to school-aged children. So we want to make sure that we're providing services to all of them. And we really want to make sure that the services are affordable, that is key. That is one of the reasons why a number of our clients do not currently have daycare is because of the affordability for them. So that is key for us is to be able to provide affordable, quality daycare. So part of this 200,000 would help us to hire a childcare director and some supporting staff to begin with. This will allow us to get all of the policies and procedures in place and to be able to prepare for the opening of the childcare center. We would also request some funds to help with utilities and also the licensing fees that would be required of us to become a licensed facility. And there's just some ways for people to contact us if you're in need of some domestic violence services.
Thank you so much, Dr. White. Questions or comments from council?
Let me just state if I can that, well, the request is for 200,000. The pillars have recommended and the mayor's office is recommending to you funding in the amount of 154,000 for, which basically covers three FTEs. So that's the amount that we're moving forward to council is 154,000.
Councilor Martinez Ortega?
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Maureen and Brenda, for being up here. How many children do you anticipate with the 154,000 children or parents, do you anticipate helping during this time?
You know, at this point, I don't have a solid number for you. Again, space at this, at the first juncture is going to be our limit. Per licensing regulations, you could provide care to so many children per square foot. And so we would be working to maximize the number of children that we could have for the square footage that we have available initially.
What do you have available right now? What can you anticipate, like what that? So, or not anticipate, I'm sorry, what, what can you calculate per square foot, how many children you can help out?
Sure. So at this point in time, from talking with other childcare providers, we're hoping to be able to initially start off with about 20 children of varying ages.
That's great. And how long do you, how long can this 154,000 sustain this new program?
Sure. So we're hoping to be able to bill for our services and we are also talking to other funders to be able to help us sustain. This is really our startup cost to be able to start these services. At this point, we're anticipating about a year, a year and a half of funding.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilor Myster?
So just to clarify, you, your daycare program was not affected because you didn't have one during the COVID. This is a new program that you're wanting to start up with the ARPA funds?
Correct. It's out of the need of us seeing the increase in women being affected by COVID. We've seen a huge increase of individuals, a huge increase of individuals who have had a difficulty leaving shelter and moving on to other settings because of lack of employment. And the number one reason that they've, one of the number one reasons is lack of childcare.
Okay.
Other questions?
President Graham? Oh, what are the children doing now with with no daycare? I mean,
So a lot of them are in shelter with their parents.
And so.
Unless they're school-aged, then they are attending school, but then back in shelter after school with their parents.
So in the future, if you were funded, would you foresee yourself being able to help more women and children? Because women would be able to go get jobs and.
Be able to leave shelter sooner than be able to have more individuals in shelter.
So it fast track.
Correct.
Them being able to get their.
Yes.
Their lives going. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
And Dr. White, you said that it's going to be primarily during operating hours. I know that the shelter though is a drop-in shelter, 24 hours in a day. Would this childcare also be available for that time?
So we've definitely discussed the need for 20 So we've definitely discussed the need for 24-hour care. Talking with Andy, Angie Shehorn at Children's First, that was one of the big discussions. It is not something we're going to rule out at this time. Looking at what, that what I'm told from her is that people have tried to do 24-hour daycares and there just hasn't been the numbers that people believe are needed to sustain or just be able to afford keeping it open 24 hours. But it is something that we have talked about and considered. We recognize that there are in our community, we have a lot of industries that are open 24 hours and being able to provide that service is something that we have considered.
Councilor Mastry?
Um, I know that you guys offer protection to those who are there at the shelter. Is there any additional risk of liability or protection? Or adding more protection for children who are not involved with things that at the shelter, they're just there needing daycare in the future?
Nothing that I can foresee at this time. It would be, you know, really the hope is to de-stigmatize the fact that they are in shelter in some ways and not make it such a focus that they're all shelter children who are there. And so, you know, we would of course have liabilities in place that would help cover anything if it was needed. We already practice at high security level. So all our buildings are closed doors, locked doors, cameras. So we would, for all our children, just keeping them safe will be the priority.
I'm just wondering about children just outside the situation. Like you said, if you open it to the public, if it would be a place that people would want to, you know, take it there, take their children there because there's always just risk of those kinds of things. What did you mean by eliminating racism? Is there racism at the shelter?
So the YWCA Pueblo is a part of the YWCA USA. We are a subset of them and the mission of the YWCAs is to eliminate racism. So address social equities is one of the main things that we're doing in everyday work. So making sure that those who are underserved have a voice and that we're helping to make sure that there isn't racism. We're an anti-racism organization.
I just didn't realize there was a need for that in there. So, thank you.
Okay. I think that that's all questions and comments. Thank you so much for your presentation, Dr. White. Um, moving right along, our next presentation is for the Pueblo Rescue Mission. So do we have Melanie and Alexis Ellis to the podium?
Hi, my name is Melanie Rappier. I am the new director of the Pueblo Rescue Mission. It's a new role for me. So I asked Alexis Ellis, who is one of the board members of the Rescue Mission to come possibly field some questions that I might not be able to answer for you since the role is so new for me. So thank you for coming, Alexis. We have a PowerPoint presentation slideshow thing for you too.
So our funding request on this grant is basically to cover the burden that we are struggling with in terms of staffing and how it's affected us. The first burden issue is in terms of increased enrollment in the shelter. You know that there's no housing in Pueblo and the rising eviction rates since the moratorium was lifted. There are motels and hotels in Pueblo that actually don't even rent rooms to individuals who are local residents that show local ID. The minimum wage rate has been raised to 1256. So if you look at that in terms of a $2,000 a month gross income, and when we talk about 30% of your income should be set aside for rental property. That gives you about $602 a month to put towards your housing. I don't know a lot of $602 a month housing available. And that doesn't include the cost of your utilities and getting into a property, moving costs, all those kinds of things. So there's subsidized housing. There are senior housing lists to wait on. So those lists cause an increase in fluctuation of residents coming to the shelter because they don't have any place to live. And so we have a lot of residents there residing, waiting to come off of those lists. They have vouchers. But the vouchers can't be used if you can't cash them in, you know, for housing that's affordable. The staffing burdens come into play when the weather is inclement, when more people come into the shelter, when we have to put them on the floors. We need more staff to resident ratios because when they come in, we need to be able to search some. We need to be able to make sure that things like contraband and drugs and things that create safety risks for the residents and the staff alike aren't coming into the shelter. And to have one to two staff members to 60 to 90 residents is just not safe. And that's what I'm operating on right now at my shelter this evening from about now till about eight o'clock in the morning. I have one female staff member on my female side and one male staff member to about 90 people. And that's it. And that can be overwhelming just based on regular dormitory activity. But if you have a behavioral management issue that gets larger and consuming, it can become problematic. And in the midst of all this, because of COVID protocols and safety, you have issues with sanitizing the dormitory, with maintaining COVID protocols, mask compliance, all of those things that make it really hard for two people to do with 90 individuals in a constant rotating basis. Two people just, just can't do it. It's, it's difficult. Special needs residents. So when COVID hit, a lot of the regulations that came down from the state and the county for ALFs and group homes and nursing homes were for mitigation of the virus. There were lockdowns, visitor restrictions, all of the things that they did to stop the spread of the virus. A lot of those residents that were in those facilities didn't stay. They walked out. They left. They left those facilities and decided to either become homeless or to try to secure or opt in for living with family or friends. But the problem with that decision-making is that a lot of those individuals in those facilities are there for various mental illness diagnoses or co-occurring diagnoses and also physical disabilities. And so their decision-making abilities affected their ability to secure housing because there wasn't any. And then in Pueblo, it's a small town. Before I had this role, I had worked before previously at the psych unit on Two North at Parkview. And I learned very easily, it's hard to place individuals in assisted living and nursing homes when they have behavioral issues. Pueblo is small and the individuals who run and own these assisted living facilities, they all talk to each other. So it's very easy for your reputation if you struggle behaviorally in the facility to precede you. If you have problems in a facility and you don't do well and you go from facility to facility, it's hard to move around and go back. So some of these individuals were already walking fine lines before they decided to walk out because they couldn't cope with the lockdowns with the visitor restrictions. And so that door closes very quickly. And so now they're out, they have nowhere to go, and so they come to the shelter. And the problem is they come with oxygen concentrators, wheelchairs, walkers, prosthetic devices, all kinds of issues that create more barriers for the staff and more problems because now we've got to make a realignment of the actual physical layout of the shelter, the way the beds are laid out, how do they access their bed? They have to have bottom bunks. We need maybe wheelchair transfers. Some of them have home healthcare that actually come to the shelter, but they can't come every time that person needs to be transferred from a chair to the bed. So that's our staff. So the staff has to coordinate that home healthcare for the nurses to come in and see those residents. So there's an added burden. And the worst part is those individuals tend to be more victimized just by nature of the vulnerability that they have for increased mental health issues, physical disabilities. They're kind of placed in a situation where they're not as readily easily to take care of themselves in the shelter. And so we can't place them back in facilities. Most of the facilities don't want them because they've closed those doors. And so they're kind of stuck in a limbo trying to find placement maybe outside of Pueblo or, you know, in the shelter until we can make alternative arrangements for them. Exacerbations of mental illness. So the mentally ill continue to flock to the mission for shelter and some are severely mentally ill. Their illness is untreated. It's been ignored for decades. So and for inpatient psychiatric beds, the national mental health standard is 50 psychiatric beds per 100,000 residents in the state. Colorado has fewer than 10 per 100,000 residents. So we have a huge lack of mental health availability in the state. So four out of every five people in Colorado who need inpatient psychiatric care are waiting for a bed. So the residual effect of COVID continues to be a stressor for homeless people. They, they struggle more with depression, anxiety, and they have an exacerbate exacerbated myriad of behavioral health problems that brings them to our shelter. They struggle with medication compliance and their follow-through with their behavioral healthcare appointments is extremely poor. And it diminishes the longer they stay at the shelter. They become apathetic. They stop caring. They stop engaging. And they take refuge in the shelter. They turn away from their treatment. And most of the time they turn to self-medication, which is the next issue that we have in terms of substance use and addiction in the shelter. The problem is they create staffing burdens for us because there are increased resident conflicts. They struggle getting along more with each other in the shelter because of the mental health issues. There's increased theft. There's a sharing of medications that's really prevalent in the shelter. Medication theft. Residents exhibiting psychosis, self-harm. The response times from local agencies are not often fast enough for effective management. So this leaves our staff to work through really highly charged and often emotional situations until somebody can arrive, whether it be police or possibly Health Solutions Crisis Team. They have crises going on all over Pueblo. So sometimes we're, we're kind of take a number. We have to wait until they can get to us. So again, that one lady on my female side and that one man on my male side are the only two there that are mitigating these crises while all kinds of other things are going on, like my special needs client that maybe needs to be moved from the shower to his bed. You know, and there could be a crisis going on in the lady's dorm because somebody's medication's been stolen. And all of this is happening with just two individuals and they can get, it's taxing. It's difficult. It's hard. It's impossible. And all the while, we need to keep in mind that we have to keep this shelter sanitized and cleaned and free of COVID or we'll shut down and then everybody will be quarantined in place. So there's a lot happening at one time in the shelter at any given time. So the funds that we're requesting are used, are going to be used to compensate the staff beyond minimum wage, which is where they are at right now. And to train them, to better equip them, to handle these types of behavioral management issues safely and with more confidence. It's, it's not an easy job to do and to ask them to do it for minimum wage is just difficult for me to do right now. So the, the dorm environment within the shelter is difficult for most people. The shelter can kind of be likened to a pressure cooker when you combine the individuals with histories of trauma and abuse. And we've commingled all of these people and other serious traumas to live in close quarters with virtual strangers just three to four feet apart. It's hard. And so with COVID there, we have groups of individuals who struggle with fear of, even at this point, with contracting COVID. And then we have the others in the mindset who are non-compliant, won't wear masks, don't want to vaccinate. And so there's a push and a pull and a fight. And so we have to get those two to coexist. It's a stressor for everybody. And so the coping mechanism for many is often illicit substance use. And so that's how they manage the stressors in a crowded, shared space with no privacy. So the bottom line is that there's, there's some perceived inherent risk for our residents. And at the same time, there's a, a level of feeling devalued and there's a fear for them about what the future looks like. They're waiting endlessly for housing. They come in in full addiction, looking for recovery and their sobriety is tenuous at best when, when they're in the shelter. One of the tenants, you guys have probably heard about recovery is change your playground. When you can't change your playground when you're homeless because you're, you're kind of stuck and you're in the shelter. Sobriety is hard here. These individuals will often sleep three feet away from people that they used with out in the streets. So it's really, really hard to maintain sobriety. A relapse has a really huge stronghold within the shelter. So it's hard for them to maintain sobriety. So it's difficult. And so when they are under the influence, they're more aggressive, they're more confrontational, they're more irrational, they're more difficult to deal with. That's a huge burden for staff. It creates huge behavioral issues for us. They're, they're hard to manage. It causes increased theft of their property amongst each other. It causes increased, increased theft for the staff, for our property, for missing items that come disappearing right within the shelter, things that belong to the shelter because of their increased illicit substance use. And without the eyes and the staff and the things that we could use as funding for, like internal cameras, having more eyes in different places. I turned to the police department a few weeks ago because I had some issues with a lot of this. And one of the things I was told was just the consistent presence of staff who are following regular search and observation protocols presents a gradual deterrent that can send a long-term message to the residents. And Sergeant Furbusch told me that at the Pueblo PD, well, right now I, I don't have, you know, I have two people who can't conduct searches and observe and create that presence. I, I need this funding to build up my staff and pay them and train them and put them into a safe and confident position to be able to manage all of these issues that are going on in the shelter daily.
Thank you for that presentation, Melanie. What questions or comments are there from council? Council winner, or sorry, Council Graham?
Before COVID happened, how many people on average were in your shelter?
I'll, I'll jump in on this one. Melanie started in December. The shelter actually opened January 20th of 2020. So we were operating at capacity. It was winter time at that particular moment too. And then, as you know, shelter in place happened in March of 2020. So the, the shelter was open for a month and a half and was pretty much at capacity at that point.
So is 90 people your capacity?
I believe it's 96 or seven. Actually 99 when we're talking about using just the dormitory. When we're talking about overflow, like during inclement weather, it could be as high as 130, 140. If we're putting bodies on the floor in both the ladies and the men's side.
And going into COVID, you just had one male and one female this in, over the last entire two years. That's kind of been how you've operated.
It ebbs and flows that way, but.
We run a tight budget at, at the rescue mission. And so yes, it's, it's usually pretty bare-bones staff, all right around minimum wage.
We run at eight to four, four to midnight.
Midnight to eight.
Councilor Flores?
First of all, God bless you for doing this. When you stop to think about, you know, the issue with homelessness, not just in Pueblo, but everywhere. What you do is incredible, incredible work and I recognize that. Would it not be better to hire security and not treat that person as an employee, but as an independent contractor? To provide, it seems to me, the way you've described things, that there's dangerous situations going on inside your building. And it seems to me that maybe. And it seems to me that maybe a security guard, not not minimizing your staff, you you need more staff. But looking at, or do you have security?
We did have.
We did have security earlier during COVID. Oh. Oh, okay. All right. Sorry. Anyway. All right. We did have security earlier on in COVID. However, we couldn't sustain it financially. And so that's the biggest barrier for getting permanent security in place. One day, we do hope to get that. But again, we opened up right at the beginning of COVID and it has made things. A lot different than what you would, the way you would normally see a rescue mission operate. It usually would be something that's more like seven at night until eight in the morning or something like that. But we have to have a place for people to shelter in place. And then. As she mentioned about, we're seeing a lot more higher needs as far as both mental and physical disabilities. That we again need to stay open so that people have a place to be.
Right. Thank you.
Council winner.
Thank you for your presentation and also thank you for all the work you do. But I do have a question. You mentioned during increment weather that you bring on more. I had made a phone call when we had. You know, some freezing temperatures and you weren't taking anyone for increment increment weather. It all went over to. The east side. You were you were bussing people over, transporting people over there. So if you're, will you take on the additional thirty when when the east side is full or how how are you doing that?
Usually what we do is we will transport via shuttle over to whatever warming shelters that are open. And then. Usually between, I would say nine PM, maybe two, three, four AM, we still have the knocks on the door. And then those individuals and our staff has gone home or is alone and can't leave the shelter to get in the van and transport anymore. We have the rapid tests for the binex testing that is the rapid fifteen-minute test. We'll test those individuals so that they will be able to come inside. They'll go on mattresses on the floor in the living area that's separate from the dorms. But we try to transport as many as we can to warming shelters or the transit center, whatever we hear or find out is open. We'll transport to those first and then the straggling individuals that come late.
That those ninety are your clients then?
Yes, yeah.
The the thirty additional would be if there's an additional overflow.
Right, right.
Thanks for clarifying.
Sure.
Other questions or comments? I'm curious about the the average tenure of your clients. How long do they typically stay?
We have some clients that have been there since it opened. That are still waiting for housing. So is that a year and a half, about a year, year, year and a half? Yeah, yeah, January of twenty twenty. So almost two years here. Yeah, it it I'll be honest with you. There's there's a some that there's just not the right type of housing for them to be moved into. Again, it might be they can't get into an assisted living or a skilled nursing facility or what have you that they need to go to. And some. They really view it as their home. There's, I think you've got a a couple of them there that are a bit older. And they really, I think they view it as their home. You know, last year, we transitioned nearly a hundred people left the shelter and went into stable housing. And so this year, I don't think we're going to be that lucky to be able to find housing for that many because the right place was one of the. One of the places that all of those individuals went or most of those individuals went. So the focus this year is going to be, for me, is going to be on programming. I'm I'm huge in mental health and it's big for me and it's important to me. So since we can't probably move all of those people out and into housing like we did so many last year, the focus is going to be this year on. Some group stuff, getting them engaged in the shelter, weekly programming, art therapy, music therapy, more recovery therapy, more groups, more DBT. If you have to be here, we need to start working on the inner self and what's going on with them individually. While they wait for the housing rather than sitting around watching TV and just letting the time pass. We want to actively engage them in things that are more positive until the housing is there.
Councilor Cantio.
I'm told that sixty, sixty-five percent of the people you service are local Puebloans.
Are are what?
Local Puebloans, local people.
Yes, I'm actually going to be coming next week, I think, to present to you guys again and talk to you about HMIS, which is a database that kind of. We use and a lot of different social service agencies use to. Keep data on individuals and demographics that come through social service agencies. And we have all kinds of amazing data about where they've come from and demographics about them. I'll be sharing that with you guys next week.
Councilor Graham.
That's right. I should have asked this before. How how much are you asking for?
A hundred and seven thousand dollars.
And that will just increase wages or that will also give you opportunity to hire more help?
Both.
Both. And what were, what will be the wages that you would like to increase them to?
You know, I've got some various positions on staff. I probably have to look at it and break it down.
So it would be more than just the the minimum wage, the twelve fifty-six, you would be increasing those people and then.
And adding new staff.
And adding new staff.
Yes.
But you don't know how much for the twelve fifty-six yet, or?
No, no. Just just to let you know, there's there is a pretty wide range of salaries there. You, I mean, you have some folks that are more just, you know, tending to the dormitories and that kind of stuff that are maybe. Closer to that minimum wage to up to fifteen. But then you have some of the case managers. The kitchen organization, the actual cooking, the shelter director, and they're up more closer to that twenty-dollar range. Not all of them, but the ones that are really taking on a lot.
Thank you.
And they should be paid probably twice that much.
Okay, we'll see you next week, Melanie. The next ARPA presentation is from SBDC. So do we have Mr. Estrada to the podium, please? And will your guests mind introducing themselves for the record?
Thanks again for having us. So we have a presentation too.
You gotta press the button.
Okay, I did and I turned it off. See, double time, just like Zoom meetings, mute challenged, you know? Okay, so I do have part of my team with me here this evening. I have Mark Matic, who is the manager for Southern Colorado Innovation Link. My name again is Brian Estrada. I'm the executive director for the Small Business Development Center. And then I have my education coordinator and basically right-hand person, Karma Lunger with me today. She's also one of the people who helped develop the Female Founders class that we're going to be speaking about today with you. I wanted to give a little history of what the SBDC and what the Southern Colorado Innovation Link really are, just to refresh your memories. Because a lot of people forget what the SBDC really was about and what it does. The history of the SBDC is that we're a federally government, we're the federal government's largest and most successfully funded. Management and technical assistance program for small businesses. We do a partnership with the US Small Business Administration and America's Small Business Development Centers Network. We boast approximately one hundred, one thousand, not, sorry, not one hundred. One thousand full-time service centers with an operating budget of overall two hundred and thirty million dollars in the United States. Half of this budget comes from different government entities, private donations, nonprofit organizations, and assistance to help with that. The Colorado SBDCs. The Colorado SBDCs. Came about in nineteen seventy. They they were funded basically in the start of nineteen seventy and then. They came into a larger existence in nineteen eighty-seven and then the Colorado Community College Network took over in nineteen eighty-nine. One of our key things is we've been hosted by Public Community College since nineteen eighty-nine. We're the only center in the state that can still say they've had the same host for all those years. In nineteen eighty-nine, the government, the governor's office also came and created the Office of Economic Development. And they added to the support and hosting of our programs. Our SBDC is basically, our mission is to help existing and new businesses grow and prosper. And our vision is to be the premier trusted choice of Colorado businesses for consulting and training purposes. Little bit about what we do. We're dedicated to help existing and new businesses grow and prosper in Southern Colorado. We provide free and no-cost. Education training, free business coaching consultation to help them through any issues and development. And then we also are a resource connector. We help them find funding. We help them find services or things that are available that they are not aware of. And one of the things I've always been touting is not everyone knows everything that Pueblo does for its citizens. So they don't know all those business resources and support systems that are available for that. The counties that we serve are Pueblo, Fremont, Warfino, and Custer County out of our office. The services that we offer, like I said, free business consulting and coaching services. We house eight individual certified consultants, all with the specialty of. A particular business entity that someone might need. We have someone who can handle manufacturing. We have someone who can help with patent patent process and design. We have someone who can help with funding, retired bankers. We have education individuals. We have small business owners that have decided to come on and be consultants. We have individuals who support rural areas so that we can handle our rural areas. Because someone who lives in that area understands what the needs are. Through our education, we average about eight different topics each month, two classes per week. Sometimes there's three or four, depending on what Carmen and I have put on the the list and what the needs are. Some of those classes that we offer, C dot training. Because as you see, see the infrastructure bill that's coming from the new administration. There is a need for different positions and businesses through the C dot training. We do certification training through the Minority Business Office so that government contracts can. Start being handed down to small businesses in our area. We're supposed to have a twenty-eight percent. Ratio of small business owners in our state contracts. Right now, we only receive twelve percent that we can actually provide. Because we do not have enough people applying or aware of the certification to help with these government contracts. We offer a business essential series, which helps them from start to finish in business. To help them manage their day-to-day operations through forecasting, through development of a business plan, marketing plans. We do a Legion Edge program for entrepreneurs, which anyone who comes to that class, if you have a business plan. We continue and take you through the whole process to change that and pivot it to the new way that we do business now. Since the pandemic hit, we do a lot of stuff on e-commerce. Pueblo. Primarily relies on foot traffic as part of their way to market their business. And so since COVID has hit. We've done a lot of work with e-commerce training and the understanding of how you can reach a larger market there. And we're also a big resource connector. We help them with business services. We help them with gaining capital and funding. We help them with scaling up opportunities. And then we are a major resource for grant resources that people come to us for. During the pandemic, over the last two years, we have boasted the largest numbers in the last seven years of operation. Our client count was four hundred and seventy-six. We helped start twenty new businesses in our area. We consulted one thousand one hundred and forty-eight hours with individuals. We had capital formation of eleven point five million dollars. That comes from PPP loans. It comes from grants that people awarded. It comes from sales increases. And it comes from reinvestment that these businesses are doing in the community. We've supported two hundred and thirty-four jobs that our clients have told us about. One of the things that our numbers. We always say that they're a little bit lower than what they actually are because not everybody comes back and tells us everything that they've done after they've worked with us. We've hosted one hundred and seventy-nine trainings in the last two years. And we've been able to have two thousand and forty-seven people attend those trainings. So I'm gonna let Mark talk a little bit about Southern Colorado Innovation Link.
Thank you for, can you hear me? Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Mark Matic. I'm manager of Southern Colorado Innovation Link. And we are. We are the first EDA Regional Innovation Strategies Grant in Southern Colorado, which means we receive funding to start the first startup and tech. Excuse me, tech entrepreneur support organization. If you're not aware, the largest source of net new job creation in the United States is through startup companies. And in creating this program, we're trying to do what a lot of the rest of the front range. Has been doing so well in encouraging and retaining startups and entrepreneurship in their own community. A lot of times when it's tied to intellectual property and able to raise non-traditional capital, which usually comes from venture capitalists and angel investors. Because these are business models that are not geographically limited in their services. They can be selling products and digital products. Around the world in some cases, and therefore we retain the equity and ownership in our own community from the people starting and running these companies. So on a ongoing basis, we're mentoring and consulting with more than sixteen businesses. We've provided startup to more than forty startups in the past three years. Our capital formation. Through last year was more than sixteen million dollars. We've. Reported fifteen provisional patents held by the startups, more than fifty-five full-time equivalent jobs created to date. Those are all net new jobs, by the way. And we believe that there will be fifty to sixty additional full-time equivalent. Jobs created within the next year because of our grant work. And we also have two of our startup companies housed within Water Tower Place in Pueblo. You can see them in the first floor. If you ever go in there.
All right, so the. I really don't need a microphone. I'm pretty loud, but let's just keep going on with that. The final two requests that we are talking to you about now are Female Founder Series Class, and we're also going to talk about the Youth Education Initiative that we have. The other original programs that we submitted to the ARPA Committee, we were able to work with CHAFA. Other donations and other vendors through private industry and nonprofit to fund the other programs that we were able to. So these are the last two that we have. Some remaining amounts. So for the female founder, we're asking for another twenty-five thousand so that we can put this on. What we're trying to do with this is. Female founders have always had an issue, starting with business, where they generally accept less for their products and services because they've been raised. To believe that they need to be nurturing and caring and assist everyone as opposed to their male counterparts. They don't value the value of the dollar. They don't always look at it. They would rather have someone. Be able to have their product and have access to something. So they generally accept about twenty percent less than what their male counterparts would through business. And so the pandemic has only made that worse. What they've now encountered is. They have limited resource or access to funding. They also experienced gender inequality even more now because when we had lockdowns, most of their businesses were considered non-essential. So they ended up having to stay home and focus more on children and domestic needs rather than how they were going to pivot their businesses. So as code ahead into the next slide. So what we're trying to do is we are creating. A series of classes. It's already developed. We're already ready to launch this week. We have our first ten students that are are there attending. It's mainly for women, but we're inviting all genders because everybody needs to understand what's happening. So it's open to everyone. Everyone that wants to participate fills out an application so we can see where their status is, what they're looking for. And then make sure that this is the right fit for them. It's going to be an eight-week series. And then make sure that this is the right fit for them. It's going to be an eight week series and what we do is we are working a series and we come up with a simple thing. We need to talk. So we need to have discussion. We need to educate on certain business needs. And then we need to create a community. They need a support system. Everyone needs some type of support for that. So in our class, we are going to reevaluate and revisit their business model canvas, which helps them discover their supply chains. Is it correct? What's the vision of their business? What is the service that they're providing? What is the benefit that they're giving to their customers? What are they looking for? We're going to talk about elevator pitches, how when they're out networking and they can tell people about their business within thirty seconds and give a good overview. We're going to take a look at their business plans, review them and update them if they need to do that so that they can have a new model, how their business will work. We're going to help them with their marketing, planning and their branding. So that they can get on involved in the e-commerce and then people will start to understand what they're doing. We also will be working with a success coach that will help them adapt to the way that they're thinking and realize that they are worth it. They need to be able to sell their products for what they're asking for. They don't need to accept this. They need to move forward. Each participant that successfully completes the course, and that means attend all classes, complete all the work. They will receive what we're calling a female founder's tech award. It's not cash that's handed out directly to them. It's more like a scholarship. It's to pay for the additional classes with their success coach to help them develop the work that they've already started. And then what it also does is give them an additional amount of money to enhance their e-commerce site if they have one in place. If they don't, it's giving them the opportunity to get one started. And then we will graduate them on into the community navigator program, which can continue to help them develop their e-commerce and their other business needs that they need. The second thing that we're looking to do is we're calling it an innovative and interactive entrepreneurial youth education program. So I'm going to let Mark talk a little bit about that.
So part of the success that all of these programs have had together in the past couple of years is going to be expanded upon if we have the funding to do specific outreach to ages thirteen through twenty one, specifically in some of the middle school and high schools. When they're participating in business classes or entrepreneurship programs, I know that a lot of the high schools have specialized programs. And we're going to reach out to these students and actually show them these additional pathways to get work experience, internships, and actually toy out starting a business idea while they're still here before they necessarily are fully enrolled. And additional business classes or participating in other programs. And in doing so, we can actually help pair them up in this work experience with small businesses and startups in our community. And we have other partners across the region that have already successfully done some of this with internship programs in the high schools. And they see an extremely high retention rate within those students when they're, it comes time to pursue an education in the region. As well as continue working and come back to work and start businesses in their own community. And we want to start providing that exposure at younger ages by supporting these students and also providing our own SPD scene skill resources to them when they have business ideas because a lot of adult, the adult population of the community again isn't always aware of all these services that are available. And we're just going to be continuing to reach out to them at younger and younger ages and help them get excited about staying here and creating businesses.
Just a little bit about how we're going to make that work is we have individuals on our staff that will go to we're looking at targeting eighth grade through the first year of college. With these individuals and our staff will go and give presentations to the classes and talk about what services and what information and how we can help them. And then our business consultants will also work with them through FBLA, DECA, the Healy Center at CSUP, through Provo Community Colleges, different programs and resources through Provo Corporate College as well, so that they can get the information and understand that there's someone there to help. So if some young entrepreneur has the idea to create a new widget, just for a lack of a better word, that fulfills a need. Mark's office can help it with the patent, with the design process of it. We can get an actual demo of the product set up and ready to go. Then they come to my office. We help them with a business plan. We help move them to the funding stage. We help move them to operation. So by the time they're finished with their college program, they could already have their business ready to start. And it's a new opportunity and gives them another career pathway. So they don't have to go into that particular nine to five job that so many of this younger generation isn't after to do that anymore. And for this particular portion, we're looking at add an ask for forty nine thousand on this one so that we can spend time in each of the classrooms and then have the staff to take care of and consult and things like that. The additional funds that this program costs, it actually was fifty nine thousand. But we do have extra funding from SBDC organization and the skill grant to cover some of the consultation and things like that. So thanks for hearing us out. Any questions?
Counselor Graham. In your female founder series, you said that you already had ten people wanting to participate. Can you give us some of those ideas that they're
Yeah.
Forward?
Yeah, so one of them is she's the president of the Pueblo West chamber and she's starting her own life coaching business and therapy business. So she is in that. We have some holistic individuals coming. We have a lady who's interested in starting a solar company, who is going to attend that class. We have another young lady who is developing soaps, bath salts, different individuals like that, different products. We have a health and wellness person who is coming, getting ready to start her business as well. And then we have another student who is looking at opening an art gallery type business and she is looking to do that. And then can't remember the other few, but that's, we're wide for, wide range there. One of the things that will happen in the next session is some of these new restaurateurs that are currently in the food projects, business accelerator. They will be coming to the next program after they see that step so that they can continue to move their process for their restaurant. We do have no, they're not going to be in the class after all. So that's, that's a mix of what we have.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. You know, as a woman business owner, I've been in business for seven years and people still want to know if my husband's going to guarantee my loan. So that's, that's a hundred percent true on
Yeah, it was.
Face this these days.
It was quite shocking when I actually did see it happen to a couple of our clients and I was like, they've been in business for, you know, and we needed to really get them through the process and prepare them. So I'm thankful that I did have consultants that were able to go back and help them prove to the bank and then they didn't need to worry about that. So it's exciting. One of the things that Mark and I and my team have discovered, like I said, I grew up in Pueblo and I left for quite some time and then I came back. I call it my sabbatical. And when I came back, Pueblo still did really rely on foot traffic and the reputation of their businesses and you went to the same restaurants that you did as you grew up. You went to the same places where you were at. And when the pandemic hit, not everybody was aware of, I can use my POS system to sell my products. I need to get a website. I need to brand my business. And so we've been working really hard on that. One of the programs that we did do last year was what we call e-commerce program. We helped twenty seven individual businesses develop an e-commerce system. And we also gave them a similar type scholarship.
Counselor Mastry.
I see you serve several counties. Have you reached out to the other counties for some of their funds?
Yes, we have. And some of them do not receive the same amount that Pueblo does. So if there are restrictions that you do ask us to put on that, we can do that because I have reached out to CHAFA for some additional funding to help with these other counties. So we can look at doing particularly just Pueblo with those funds. Custer County and Warfino County do not have the funds that Pueblo does, but Warfino County is willing to submit some funds. As we continue this last session that we just finished the applications for, no one from Warfino County did apply. So I didn't need to get any of those funds, but once they do see the class moving forward. They will be able to help us fund for some of those individuals.
And so, so you're not getting any. So the services that you're, you're building, are you providing for those counties?
Yes, we do that as well, as well as, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Winner.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your work. I do agree that Pueblo is pretty backwards compared to larger metropolitan services or cities. And women in Pueblo make forty one percent less than men.
Yes.
And it's a big problem here in the city and I'm sure it gets worse the further south you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions. Thank you for your time, SBDC. And the very last ARPA project proposal that we have is from Mr. Ibarra considering around Ibarra's boxing club.
Does it on?
It is. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Ibarra.
Well, good evening. I'm not really a public speaker or anything, so I'm more of a boxing coach and anything, so bear with me. So I put this stuff together here for you. I'm gonna give you, I have a copy of what I'm going to say and whatever we're going to do. My name is please Joey Vara. First, I want to thank the council for the opportunity to come here before you to outline our intent and our desire for our boxing club that serves our youth in the community as well as the financial needs and the COVID effects that it's had on us. I am the owner and the CEO of Ivaras Boxing Club, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. The Ivaras Boxing Club was brought to Pueblo with three main objectives. Number one is for our youth to stay off the streets and provide a safe place to learn the art of boxing. Number two, to stay out of trouble and to provide a safe haven from the gang activity. And a place where youth can go after hours and relieve their daily stress. And number three, it's to also have a direct communication with adult role models, other youth role models also. You ought to boxing club is not only a box about boxing. We have volunteer counselors on hand to help other youth in a classroom so they can complete their schoolwork. So you see the financial assistance that we are asking for is very important for our youth in the community and the equipment for our boxing club. As we ask for donations and have bake sales and car washes and etc., it's never enough. We are in need of a competition ring most, most desperately. Finances are also needed for travel, housing, gas, food, as we travel around the state, the region and the nation to include international competitions. And to represent Pueblo and the state of Colorado. As you're all aware, for the past two years of the COVID pandemic has redirected and restricted our businesses and families in our community, causing them great harm. It will take a long time to recover from the COVID nineteen. Athletic gyms for the longest time had to close down, especially boxing gyms due to the nature of being a contact sport. It really took a financial toll on our ability to pay the rent, electricity and etc. Most, most of all is the ability to help our youth in our community. As we continue to move forward with our lives and with the guidance of our community leaders, I believe there's light. I believe there's light at the end of the tunnel. I just want to thank each and every one of you here today on behalf of the Ivaras Boxing Club and letting us express our views and our financial needs to you. And we are asking, you know, just enough to buy a boxing ring, a competition ring, who's about seventeen to twenty thousand dollars. Most of our kids today that come to the gym, like for instance, Saturday, we went to Aurora and we had a competition Aurora. Everything I pay out of my pocket. Pretty soon I'll probably be divorced. I've been doing this for forty five years, but with the help of the mayor, Bradshaw and stuff. When I first met Mr. The mayor, he helped me, actually, we're in a city building as of today. And so as with the mayor's help, we're there today and right now I think we have like forty two kids in that, in that gym. Okay, most of the kids, you know, their parents, they can't pay. They don't have jobs or they don't have enough money. So most of the stuff, like I say, me and the coaches and none of the coaches, nobody gets paid in our gym. I believe that if you want to help the kids, you know, let's put, put your money where your mouth is at. Let's go help them. You don't need to get paid. Yeah, the payment comes helping the kids and Councilman Anticio said something earlier about, you know, if you're five years old, you know, well, we take the kids at the age of five, all the way up to adults. You know, so our job is to make sure that these kids are not drinking, are not smoking, you know. And we give them on the right path, you know, and that's, that's a lot of stuff, you know. And I've heard a lot of these people that were here earlier. I'm really not a speaker, but ching wow, man, you know, these guys here, you know, they, they, they take a lot of, they need a lot of money, you know, but we do, we do it because we love the sport of boxing. We love to help the kids. We're here for the community, you know, so if you guys could help us out, you know, get the boxing ring, that'd be, that'd be awesome. So I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you for that presentation. You're a good public speaker, Mr. Ibarra. So counsel yourself for Counselor Graham.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for what you're doing down there. How many days a week is the gym open?
Right now, we do Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. And as soon as the spring hits, we'll do Saturdays also. Because we, we try to make sure that, you know, we do the evenings to keep the kids off the streets, you know, so they have something to do. And, uh, but like I said, right now I got five coaches in there and stuff and including myself. We also have a gym in Colorado Springs, so based out of Colorado Springs and stuff. And right now I'm also in contact with Convention Center. I'm bringing in a twenty country international event here at the Convention Center from, I think we're looking at the first two weeks of September. So, well, I think that'll be the first time Pueblo has had a, a boxing event here at, at that big of magnitude, you know, so. But so I'm kind of excited to bring that to Pueblo. And I think it'll bring a lot of, a lot of revenue with the hotels and stuff and everything like that, so.
And you're asking for a competition ring? Is that
Yes, yeah, they run around seventeen thousand or so, you know.
What do you guys use now to?
Well, we constructed just floor rings, you know, we're, we got floor rings, you know, because it's for sparring and stuff like that. But in order for us to make sure our kids shine and have some good competition, we, we got to have a, a competition ring, so.
Other questions or comments? Councilor Martina's were taken.
Yes, thanks Joe for the presentation. How many, so you said you have about five coaches now. How many, how many volunteer hours do you think happen per week down there at Ivaras?
We probably do anywhere from forty, forty hours or so or more, maybe forty, forty five. Yeah, because even though on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you know, we, we still bring in kids. I like that. The ones that are ready for more competition, but our actual hours just Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. And then like I say, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're also there, but for some of the other kids, you know, bad kids that are, you know, they need, so I'm So I'm also talking with the Juvenile Department, you know, to help them, get them out of the ju- juvie and kind of bring them out, you know?
Give them something to focus on.
Exactly, yes.
And you said you have about forty-two kids that attend weekly. This seventeen to twenty thousand dollar boxing ring, how many folks do you think, how many folks do you anticipate coming for that twenty international country event?
For that one, and it's actually going to be two events, because we're gonna, USA Boxing and myself just met with the Convention Center. So, and what we're gonna do is, we're gonna put the twenty-country international, and then I'm kind of picking back in off theirs, because I can't really afford to pay the Convention Center for what they ask. So, so USA Boxing, so I'm gonna, it'll be the USA Boxing and then the Pike's Peak Invitational together, all, all at the same time. So, that way, because the USA Boxing, they don't have the, the bigger kids and stuff, and world-class boxers from around the world. And then, at the same time, I'm gonna sneak into Pueblo Kids and all the other kids around the nation, so.
That's great. We'll keep a surprise on that, let us know when that's gonna happen.
Well, we're shooting, right now, we're shooting for, like I say, the first or second week of September. We're just waiting back on, on the Convention Center, on Kevin Ortiz and them guys over there to give us their dates, you know, so.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Ibarra.
I think that's it, thank you so much, Mr. Ibarra. And now we know how, who to call if we need a box lesson.
Yeah, if you guys have any kids or something, grandkids, yeah, bring them down and shoot.
I was talking about us, I was talking about us. Thanks. Okay, and I think, is that all of the today, anything else for the good of the order?
I have one question, I don't know.
You know, I was just, not, not for you, no. I was a little confused about the lost revenue that the city was asking for Public Works on that, on that nine-point-whatever-million for ARPA, I don't understand, are we getting that money, are we not getting that money? I don't, I don't know, I don't get it.
That's how the ARPA statute passed by Congress. You know, there are four categories basically that you can use, and so lost revenue is one. And based on the formula that they adopted in the rules and regulations, if you didn't grow as fast as they projected you would, or as you had historically grown, you've lost revenue and you get to use that for any governmental services, not just limited to ARPA purposes.
Laura mentioned something that, I thought she said something about how we didn't know if we were gonna get it or not. Is that because we were over a certain amount?
No, we haven't.
Okay, we do have it.
Yep, and the question is whether it's ten million or more. Right now, we're calculating at nine point four, because that's what it was based on last year's calculations. But we, we haven't said we'll take the ten million yet, because we're gonna calculate it when we get our financial report for twenty twenty-one to see if it's higher than ten million. If it is, then that's what we'll claim, but.
Before, before anybody leaves, I think this is an appropriate time to maybe talk again about whether or not the city council should hire their own legal counsel. And not that we can have any action tonight, but I think, I think it's important that we identify whether or not we really have the votes here to move forward on this. And, and I'd, I'd like, are you walking away?
I'm just stretching.
Okay, no, I, I just wanted to bring it back up, because I had the occasion, as a courtesy to Councilor Winner, I did talk to the one candidate that she had referred us to. And I had, she was a nice lady and I had a long conversation with her. But, you know, she's really not the story, and the story is whether or not we think this is a great idea. And I've, I've, I've been work, I mean, this topic has been on the agenda for the last four years, and we went through two versions of it. And one of the things that I did in two thousand and eighteen, when it first came up, is I talked to a gentleman named Sam Mamet, who was the Executive Director of CML. And he said that it was a bad idea, because no other city in the state of Colorado having a strong form, mayor form of government, has their own separate legal department. So I start, I've been thinking about this a long, a long time, and a couple of points that I wanted to make. The second point is that we have four brand-new city council members. You guys have been on board two months, and I believe that that's probably the strongest reason why we shouldn't be having a discussion about whether or not we need separate legal counsel. You, many of you don't know, have not toured the, our legal department, you don't know how many attorneys we have back there. Many of you do not know Mr. Kagosek's background. He's had years, I mean, literally years of both county, representing the county of Pueblo and the city. And I think the four of you that are just newly elected, you need, you need to get your feet wet as to whether or not you, you believe that we need a separate legal counsel. I don't believe that we do, I haven't from the very beginning. We went through two RFPs, we had only, in the first go-around, we had one man that was interested. He lived in Pagosa Springs, and he did have some government background. And he also, and then we, we tried it again a couple of years ago, and the law firm involved, that it's Altman, Lidle, Kyleback, that law firm, they were the only ones that really made a presentation and proposal that made any sense. They went back to their office and looked at all of the conflicting things that could happen, and they pulled their RFP and said they were no longer interested. So it's been difficult to get anybody interested in that. So I, you know, I also think that the person that, that I was directed to, I didn't feel it was an interview, I know that you think it was an interview, I did not interview that lady. We, she was on her car phone, and I was just wanting to know what, you know, whether or not she really did want to represent the city council. And it was interesting, because she actually has no municipal experience. After you start digging into her background, she was a county commissioner, she was in line to get the county attorney job. But very distinctly, there's a difference between being a county attorney and a city attorney. A county attorney works under Colorado state statutes. We work under as a home rule city under a, you know, a city charter. So there's two different, these two people are two different areas in my estimation. But I don't want to beat this to death, I, I think, I need to, we need to know whether or not, you know, this is a good idea. And I'd like to hear it, because I'm, I'm totally opposed to putting it on our agenda and voting on this. And I think we should end the discussion right now. Maybe the four of you will feel differently a year from now, and you feel we do need an attorney. But I think you need to give yourself a year at least to determine whether or not you feel like we need a separate attorney. I, I personally don't think so, you couldn't get a more competent attorney than Dan Kagosek in my estimation. So that's my story, and I stick with it.
Counselor Mike.
Well, you made a statement the other day at the last council session that Mr. Kavosik works for the mayor, who works for us?
Under the city charter, he works for all of us, he works for the city.
You said he works for the mayor, he works for the mayor. The mayor is in charge of Mr. Kavosik, so who works for us?
He works for us. And if I, if I said that, I don't believe I said that, but if I misspoke, I'll correct, I'll correct it right now. From, from a, from an employer-employee relationship, he does work for the mayor, but he, but his job and his oath of office is to represent the city of Pueblo, it's in the city charter. So he represents city council, he represents the citizens, he represents the mayor, he represents.
Who brought the Lidle, L- law firm in front of city council to, yes?
Who brought him forward?
Yeah, who brought Lidle, the Lidle law firm forward to?
It was, we put out an RFP through the purchasing department.
What was his background in municipal law? Did he, did David Lidle have a background in municipal law?
Yes, he does.
So he's been, he's been practicing for the city, or this city or another city?
I, I think, I think we have an issue here where you need to describe why you think we need separate legal counsel. I'm not on trial here, I just want to know.
No, I, I mean, you're, but you're, you're not on trial, but you're making a case.
Okay.
And you're saying, you're saying, you're saying certain things, and I'm just asking you to clarify. If you're gonna make points, I need for, I'm asking for clarification on those points. Because you're trying to make a case that we don't need one, and you're saying things that, you know, I'm just asking you to clarify.
I want to give an opportunity to Mr. Kagosek.
Well, just in terms of Dave Lidle's background, he served on the Planning and Zoning Commission and currently represents HARP. And I've worked with him on many projects involving the cities, very experienced and understands municipal law.
Counselor Tencio.
The one and only time we needed outside attorney was for the complaint against the mayor. We got that attorney, he gave us the legal advice that we needed, and that was it. Other than that, all the years that I've been here, we've never needed an outside attorney. And other cities, Colorado Springs in particular that I know of, they have, city council is represented by an attorney from the city attorney's office. And they've never had any problems in terms of conflict of interest, doesn't cost them anything extra. And they have perfect representation. I've heard somebody say, well, that attorney would work for the city attorney, therefore he would be obligated to him. That's not the case, the law is the law. And like I spoke to the lady that we're thinking of, the law is the law. She could interpret it one way, it's, doesn't get interpreted five different ways. It's, it's, the law is the law, it's, it's just black and white, you know? So if anything, if we have an attorney, I think it should come from the city attorney's office, which we never needed.
Is, is it in the budget for us to have an attorney? And when and why did that come about, I'm curious?
I think it's been in the budget, I think hundred thousand dollars has been set aside for the city council hiring attorney since I've been the mayor, maybe it was before that, I don't know, but since, was it there before that? But since I've been the mayor, it's been a hundred thousand dollars, and I don't think anybody's really dipped into it.
Do you know why Dennis, why there, why that happened, or? Why we did that to begin with, why we budgeted to begin with?
There's, you know, there's a thinking that if you get another attorney, you'll get a different answer. And I think that's what it all boils down to. You know, if you don't like the decision that Dan's giving you or his interpretation, maybe we can go find someone that'll give you the right answer. I don't mean to be cynical with that, but I think that, at the, at the end of the day, that's, that's the real question.
And there have been individuals on other city councils that have thought that way. Oh, we need our attorney because we don't trust Dan. And there's always been one or two people, and, and we've never needed an attorney.
Mr. Kagosek.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with you consulting other attorneys as the needs arise. The ethics complaint against the mayor, I said had no merit. You went to a qualified municipal lawyer from Denver, who said the ethics complaint had no merit. And that, that's your option, and I think that's why the money was set aside on a case-by-case basis. If people don't like my answer and, and want to get another answer, I think they're gonna be disappointed, frankly. So, that's why the money was there, I'm glad it was there, I'm glad the ethics complaint against the mayor was dismissed by you, first on my recommendation, and then on the recommendation of outside counsel. So, I take, I don't take this personally, if you want to hire somebody to get a second opinion, that's fine, that's no problem. But to hire somebody full-time who doesn't have experience, who has said, as I read her file, that she doesn't have any interest in law, her interest is politics, that frankly causes me concern about Rose Puglisi, I think her, her name is. Yeah, that, that causes me concern.
So I think, right now, the issue on the table is, do we move forward or not?
We can't vote on that, we're not here to vote on it tonight, because she's coming up on the agenda, and at that point, we vote.
I think Counselor Flores was asking for a direction.
For winner, and it was a four to three that we should look at it. I think things have changed now, and I think that you have more information now. And I think you need, you need more information to find out whether or not there's, there's some sort of a need, and I hope that, you know, when you interviewed this lady and you started looking at what I've said and what's happened in the past, that maybe, you know, we take another straw poll. I didn't start the straw polls, Counselor Winter did.
Counselor Martinez, are taken.
Thank you, I'll ask for a straw poll whether we should continue or not. I don't think that we should. Yeah, I don't think we need, have a need for outside counsel right now. And that hundred thousand dollars, I see as a great contingency, if we do. And, and to Dan's point about having a full-on-time or a full-time lawyer or attorney for city council, I don't think is necessary. And I also get worried about the billable hours of, from phone calls. So I would say no for an outside counsel at this point.
So the issue on the table right now is a straw poll.
Well, I've said my piece, that's a no.
Counselor Tencio.
How did it go from, we're gonna look into getting an attorney to, we're hiring a specific person?
I, I can attest to that, so, um, there was an attorney that we hadn't been given a name to, a name of. And I met her in person about six weeks ago. At that point, I asked for a work session to where she could come and talk to all of us at the same time, to where we could ask questions and, you know, all of us get a fill from her as a giant interviewer. You know, I thought that's per se what we should do. At that time, I was asked to take it off of the work session and that Rose would be contacting each person individually. Last Wednesday, I received an email from Counselor Winner saying that she did contact everybody individually, and it was ready to go on the agenda, and that is why I emailed you, Dan, Mr. Kagosek, not knowing that everybody hadn't got a full interview yet. So that was me bringing it forward, but I would have liked to see a work session or more communication. You know, I, I met Rose for ten minutes, fifteen minutes, had conversation, so it, it would have been nice to have her here forwards. And that's Mr. Tencio, that's how it got to, to where we are tonight.
I also did speak to Rose for about ten minutes, to Counselor Flores's point of view, or what he said earlier. As, you know, someone who's new, I don't necessarily. As, you know, someone who's new, I don't necessarily have a need right now for an attorney that would be outside. The scope of work or the realm of Mr. Kagosek.
Talking too much on this subject. I think Dennis is, there are really two issues here. The first issue is. Does counsel want to hire a separate attorney? Full-time?
I also know that when we had talked to Rose, it would be on a. It could possibly be on an hourly. An hourly thing. She had told us it wouldn't be, she wouldn't be here every meeting. We had talked about even how we would be able to address her, whether we would need a four to three to even contact her about. Something, but once again, none of that was brought up or. Told to any of us at the same time or in any real fashion.
Yeah, thank you for that. I I think more precisely is. Does city council want to hire an attorney? Is an attorney for city council needed? I think that's Dennis's point. And then if the if if there are. If the majority says yes, then we get into, do we RFP this again? And who is the best candidate for that position?
Councilman Flores. Counselor Maestri.
I'm not voting on this because this is not the proper place to do it. We just talked about when they opened it up. That today was not the time to do it. We couldn't take, we can't take a vote on it.
I'm a no. I don't, I'm not interested.
To the proper channels to get here. I think it was. More of one-on-one calling and I would have liked to see it happen all in front of us. And so that's that's on Counselor Winner for doing it that way. Also on Counselor Maestri, I tried to have the work session, so I'm I'm still open for an attorney. I'm not giving it a no, but I think there was a better channel to go through this.
And I'm also a no, and I had also expressed to this attorney that. I wanted to see it during work session. And I wasn't going to be asking questions via text as we were before. So no for me.
To Counselor Winner's defense. When Ms. Solano had asked us, she said, do you want to do an RFP or do you have a? A attorney in mind? And so her, what she asked for was something after talking to people, I guess. We could RF, we could RFP it or we could put a name up forth. So that's all she was doing. Was putting a name forward.
I need clarification. Was, were we taking that next step and putting this lady into? A resolution, hiring this lady? Was that the next step? I got the impression that that's what Lori wanted, Counselor Winter wanted to do. And. My talking to this lady, she was on her car phone. I do not consider was an interview. And that's why Counselor Winter wanted all of us to talk to her. Because that was the interview. But to bring her name forward and not properly vetting her. Finding out that, you know, she has no municipal. Background. You know. Now, if 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 the vote, if if the resolution would have said. Are we interested in moving forward with an RFP? That's a different thing. But that's not what's happened here. I think the process. Just went off the rails as far as I'm concerned.
Yes.
Counsel frequently gives direction at work sessions. And as I count the votes. Assuming that Counselor Winner is in favor. The vote is four to three. Not to hire an attorney for city council at this time. And it can be changed at the will of counsel.
Okay, seeing no other business, it's eight forty-five and I conclude this meeting.